The October 30th, 2025, meeting of the Corvallis School Board is now called to order at 6:32 PM. To support the health and safety of all community members, particularly those who are immunocompromised and their families, the Board continues to offer a virtual participation option for Board members and district staff. Public comment is available at select meetings, both in person and virtually. Details on how to provide public comment are available on the Corvallis School District website. Tonight's agenda, board packet, and a link to the district's YouTube channel can be found on the school board page of the website. All public meetings are live streamed on YouTube and recordings are typically posted the following day. Tonight, we have all Board members in attendance, in person, and the first item on our agenda is the acknowledgement of Native American Heritage Month.
Corvallis School District 509J, acknowledgement of Native American Heritage Month, resolution number 21-1003. Whereas the Corvallis School District recognizes and pays tribute to the significant contributions made in our community by Native American people, which includes American Indians, Alaska natives, and Native Hawaiians, as well as indigenous people from Canada, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the broader Pacific Islands. And whereas the Corvallis School District affirms that Native American students, families, staff, and community members should be valued for all aspects of their identities, and...
Whereas Native American Heritage Month, great of efforts began by Dr. Arthur C. Parker of the Seneca Nation's work with the Boy Scouts of America in adopting American Indian Day in 1912. And whereas Reverend Sherman Coolidge of the Arapahoe Nation and then President of the Congress of American Indian Association first proclaimed American Indian Day on September 28th, 1915, then calling on the nation to observe this day, and...
...travel across the country on horseback to gain endorsement of 24 state governments to hold a day to honor Native Americans nationally before presenting it to the White House on December 14th, 1915. And whereas American Indian Day was first declared May 1916 in the state of New York, and whereas Native American Awareness Week was first proclaimed nationally in 1976, and...
Whereas what was then called National American Indian Heritage Month was first proclaimed nationally in 1990. And whereas the Kalapulia people have called the Corvallis area and Willamette Valley home since time immemorial, and whereas the Confederate tribes and the Grand Ron community of Oregon and the Confederate tribes of Soletts Indians continue to maintain their ancestral and cultural connections to the Corvallis area and the broader Willamette Valley, and...
Whereas there are countless cultural heritages represented by Native American peoples. And whereas the state of Oregon has a documented history of anti-indigenous actions based on colonization, which includes genocide, forced removals, deprivation, broken treaties, and the outlaw of Native American cultural practices, and...
Whereas education has been misused as a tool of colonization and organs serving to sever Native American children from their families, languages, and cultural heritages through boarding/regidential schools, beginning with the Indian Training School at Forest Grove, which later moved and became Chomaua Indian School in Salem. And whereas Native American Heritage Month provides an opportunity to continue the district's growth in learning about the many contributions of Native American people in the nation, world, and local community, and...
Whereas education is a necessary component for creating a more equitable and anti-racist community, nation, and world. And whereas the Corvallis School District has made a commitment to equity and anti-racism, and...
Whereas the Corvallis School District has a responsibility to honor and respect the diverse history of our community, and whereas the Corvallis School District believes each and every student must be celebrated, appreciated for the distinct and vibrant contributions made by sharing cultures, language, ideas, beliefs, and values within a school community.
Therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Education of the Corvallis School District, thus hereby proclaim November 2021, as well as each November annually, as Native American Heritage Month in the district, and strongly encourages students, families, staff, and community members to join in existing local celebrations. And encourages all schools in the district to help highlight this month in great appropriate ways, as well as highlight the contributions of Native American peoples to the local community, nation, and beyond, both historically and in current times, adopted by the Board of Directors of Corvallis District Number 509J of Benton and Lynn Counties, Oregon, at its regular meeting this 21st day of October 2021.
Thanks, everyone. And as a reminder, while those were signed and meant to be reoccurring every year, we like to reread them to reaffirm Corvallis School District's commitment to what's said in them. And the next thing on the agenda are student representative reports. We have two student representatives with us this evening. I don't know which one of you would like to go first?
Thank you. Well, good evening. Thank you to the Board for having me. I'm always grateful to have a chance to share what's been happening at Corvallis High School. We recently had a very successful blood drive. Students exceeded our goal and donated 45 units of blood, saving up to 135 lives. We're incredibly proud of our students and staff for their generosity, especially those who decided to donate on the day of the event. We also had a great homecoming week with strong participation from both students and staff. Spirit Week had an amazing energy and over 400 students attended our dance. Looking ahead, we're getting ready for our annual Winter Smiles program. It's a student-led holiday project where CHS leadership provides gifts and essential supplies to families in need within our school community. Last year, we supported 35 families, including some living in cars, hotels, or shelters. If anyone is interested in donating this year, please contact our school's fiscal clerk, Jen Carr. Thank you so much for continued support of Corvallis High School and everything you guys do to help us build a strong and caring community. Thank you.
So my report consists of two sections. Number one is going to be a regular news report from CV, and then the second part is going to be slightly different. So here we go. Crescent Valley's girls volleyball team went undefeated this season and competed in the 5A 3 Midwellamette League Championship against West Albany and got second. The CV boys soccer team defeated CHS 1-2-0, winning the rivalry game for the fourth year in a row, and girls soccer won 2-1. Both the girls' and boys' varsity cross-country team got third in district just a few hours ago. Also, students wore their Halloween costumes on Wednesday to compete for raider pride points, displaying spirit and pride. Crescent Valley still has many exciting events to come, including class-related celebrations and the blood drive, which is on November 12th, as well as Powderpuff, which is on November 14th. Also, an email was sent out to all the Board members regarding a resolution passed through Crescent Valley's Core Council, so I'll be reading that out now. "To the members of the Crescent Valley Board 509J, we, the collective members of Crescent Valley High School Core Council, present the following message regarding adding an amendment to the revised consolidation proposal to redraw the Corvallis School District's high school boundary line. To equitably rebalance the student body populations of both Corvallis High School and Crescent Valley High School, we propose, one, examining the inequitable distribution of Corvallis School District students between the two high schools; a, considering the effect the current boundary's inequitable distribution has on available opportunities and resources between each high school; two, revisiting the superintendent's recommendation in the March 5th, 2020 proposal for adjustment of boundaries regarding the unequal enrollment in CVHS and CHS; a, taking into account the superintendent's recommended map at this time and being cognizant of the need to make adjustments to account for changes since the original proposal due to changes in birth rates and housing in Corvallis. Quote, "recommend redrawing the middle school boundary to include Jefferson Elementary as a feeder school to Shuttleton Middle School and Crescent Valley High School; three, calling for the drawing of an equitable boundary line between the two high schools via the CSD's innovation team; a, balancing the enrollment and population of students who reside within the Corvallis School District between the two high schools in order to provide equitable access to opportunities and resources across the school district at the high school level. We call for this amendment in order to prioritize the health and future of CVHS, the effect on students, staff, and families, and to address current birth rates and housing changes. We urge you to use this resolution to inform the proposal of an added amendment. Endorsed by ASB Presidents Patrick Howard and David Wang, Senior Class Presidents Penelope Saldara-Botson and Sidney Villeret, Junior Class Presidents Kira Lynn and Clarence Fernando, Sophomore Class Presidents Ty Gunther and Saylor Zimmerman, Freshman Class Presidents Aiden Lin and Teddy D, Student Representatives to the School Board Laura Chen and Leo Shores, Treasurer to Core Council Vivav Javali, Technical Coordinator Jackson Taylor, Publicity Coordinator Kira Gibson, Spirit Commissioners Asher Barlow and Avery Rinker, Social Media Coordinator Ingrid Wen and Aiden Menninger, Equity Coordinator Tessa Zavios, Sustainability Coordinator Harper Hemlin, Secretary Allison Lee, Athletic Coordinator Lila Robertson, and Mental Health Commissioner Natalie Young. Thank you."
Thanks, Thomas. Thanks, Laura. I wanted to point out that I know that showing signs of appreciation is always welcome, and it does, like, when we get to public comment, might slow down public comment a little bit. So I just wanted to put that out there for thinking ahead for everyone to consider. Thank you both for your reports, and I'm sure we will come back to some discussion later as well. But the next item on the agenda is the revised consolidation proposal presentation with Ryan Nos and team.
Good evening. I'll have everybody introduce themselves, just because we have some new folks here with us this evening.
Hi, Lauren Wolf, Director of Finance.
I'm Ryan Nos, I'm the Superintendent.
Melissa Harder, Assistant Superintendent.
Byron Bethro, Director of Student Growth and Experience.
So we're here tonight to share a revised proposal with the Board. At the last board meeting, there was a request for us to work on a revised proposal that we have shared with the community. Oftentimes, we present something to the Board and then ask for community input on it. But because of the way that these processes have gone and how challenging and sometimes painful they are, we felt like it's important to start by talking to staff. And so I had a chance to do that at Letitia Carson last week. And then we have also held a listening session prior to this being presented. So it will feel a little bit like we know some of this already, but I'm saying that just because it's important that I formally present it to you along with the team. The other thing I know is that this is an incredibly difficult proposal to bring forward. Earlier today, someone sent me a text saying something about how people show up for the things they care about. And we obviously have lots of folks here tonight who showed up because this is something that they care deeply about. And I think that it's important to recognize that as we begin this conversation and to look at the proposal that our team is bringing forward. So this is an example of something we've seen a few times, but I think it's important to note. That shows the enrollment trends of this community since the '50s all the way till today. Each of those orange dots represents either the opening of a new school or the closure of a building. I think it's important to note it for a couple of reasons. One, because it shows where we are currently and historically in terms of enrollment in our community, but also to show that there have been times where we've opened schools and there have been times when we have closed schools. And I have a big version of that in my office, and every time I look at it, I kind of think about who was the person in my seat when each one of those things happened and how did they handle it? How did they deal with it? Because it's a really hard thing to handle and deal with, but it gives me a little bit of perspective, too. So last spring, we began a process of long-range facilities planning. In that process, we brought together community members and the city and the county to look at both the conditions of our building, also building capacity. They looked at it by individual building. They also looked at it in terms of some of our programs that are centered to the work that we do and the classrooms that those require, as well as the overall enrollment numbers. as well as the overall enrollment numbers um for last school year. So that's one of the pieces that we shared. We had a community event at Linus Pauling last spring where we shared a number of data sets. Um but this was one of those key pieces that we've continued to use as we've worked through this process. So the recommendation um that Long Range Facilities Committee met um all spring and then they made a recommendation to me that I brought to you in August at during our board retreat. Um, the recommendation was for us to um look at consolidation in the school district, recognizing that we had um more capacity than is needed by our current enrollment. They also wanted us to continue to work with the City of Corvallis to collaborate on housing and community growth because we know that that is the most significant driver of how our enrollment has changed over time. Um, an important piece of our collaboration ongoing with the city. The, can you go back just for a second? The other piece was around industry stick um boundaries and how that should also be considered. Um and that's something that I've, I've made modifications to in this most recent proposal.
And I think it's important um to kind of take a step back and look at just the financial planning and, and how the modeling um was done for this process. So if we remember back to the twenty-four, twenty-five um budget cycle, that was in the spring of twenty twenty-four, the y'all, the long-range financials showed the, the impact um that we were going to be facing with the um Esser Funding Cliff, which were dollars that were allocated to us by the federal government um during COVID and also declining enrollment. For that budget cycle, the district reduced spending by eight million dollars. So in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget cycle, which is the budget that we're currently operating within, um that was in the spring, um earlier this year, our enrollment and birth rate trends continued. Um and the three-year long-range financial plan, um it looks unmanageable without any significant structural changes. So you'll remember those conversations that we had um during the budget meetings, um as well as leading up to that, where we talked about um that, that we are going to have to make some significant changes. In that budget cycle, um we reduced by three million dollars. Also, at that time, as sort of overlapping in the spring, um we did conduct a third-party enrollment and demographics study. Um that information, the full report is available on the website. Um but we did that to support the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee that Ryan mentioned previously, um so that we could look at where um is, where is housing being built in our community? What are the trends look like there incorporated data that they received from the City of Corvallis and from Benton County? Um it also looks at um just trends on number of births and how does that equate to connect to housing as well as enrollment and all of those different pieces, where, where are pockets of enrollment um in our different neighborhoods throughout the district. So that information helps us. It informs the decisions and, and typically I do the enrollment projections myself as a part of the budget cycle. Um and it, and using a bunch of trend, trend data, but I don't have the level of tools, you know, that an entire analytic company um has, but we don't pay for that report on an annual basis. But when we get, when we get ready to make some significant changes, it's important just to make sure that what we're seeing is in alignment with what um the, uh another organization is seeing. So that was why that was conducted. And then when we talk about how were these models built, I know that in, in the report, there's a really rolled-up version of the financials. Um and I just wanted to speak a little bit to how all of that was put together. So what we know from our various conversations is that the largest source of funding for schools in Oregon is driven by enrollment. And so that being said, enrollment is the basis for all of our financial projections and until we have a solid number, which is generally October first um of every year, we use that um first period ADM, which is average daily membership. Um that's, we can't, we can't put together our official um budget numbers until that point. So we do use those enrollment numbers pretty heavily and we track it. So our models were created using our basic staffing allocated to all schools. Like so, for example, all schools have a principal, they will have um some sort of um health room staff, front office staff. They all have teachers, obviously, um and all, you know, all of those different positions throughout a school. Um, you know, we have food service staff, we have custodial staff. There's all of those different positions that are allocated to a school. So when we allocate staffing to a school, it's either based on a flat amount um in the amount being in FTE, full-time equivalency. Um so for example, of a flat-funded position is a principal. Um we have one-point-oh principals at all of our schools. Um and then we also allocate on a formula depending on the position. So an example for that would be um our general um educational assistance. So I'm, I, when I say general, I mean just the um general classroom support, not tied to special education or title or any of those components. So those are all layered on afterwards depending on um a school's demographics. So an example would be um if we have one general education assistant per seventy-five students, that would be a formula that we would allocate um staffing on. So those formulas can change year over year as we try new things, um or we just adjust to the needs of students. Um but for the purpose of the modeling, we're using the exact same formula and ratios that we used for the current year twenty-five, twenty-six budget because we want to be able to compare apples to apples. Um and so we don't want to make any changes to those assumptions because we want to keep as many factors um steady as possible so we can just look at the dollar changes. Then for those staffing positions, we take the average cost for each of those staff members. We take the average cost of a principal, um and then we allocate that, that dollar amount across all the schools when we're putting together the model. So that the actual cost um of the model will change after we do the budgeting because we, I mean, as people retire or um matriculate through the system, move schools, obviously that's going to change the exact cost. So that's how we keep the model stable in that regard. Um, in addition, there are more expenses that are required to operate a school than are included in the projections. So we're just looking at the base level of staffing, um which doesn't necessarily take into account maybe the um specific needs of every student at that school. Um because we, they will need that same level of support in theory at where, when they go to another, um a different, if they went to a different school. So that's why we're just looking at what is status quo across all schools. So again, the numbers will look different once we put this in the, the actual budget um because of, of those changes. And then, once we are able to do that, um that will, these amounts will start to be more solidified and that will all come forward to you through the budgeting process, just our standard process that we start, well, next month now. So um we'll start putting that together once we have um the, the recommendation, the approved um proposal from the board. And not, not that we wouldn't want to bring forward the most exact numbers as we can, but um as you know, that budget process is about nine months in time. Um and, and so if I was to take, I, I wouldn't be able to do a full budget on every single um model that has come forward to be considered. So we are looking um at those general costs that it takes to operate a school and that will look different when we bring it back to you for a budget.
So I wanted to start um with where we, where we started from, which was that initial recommendation. Um, we started with that recommendation. I brought it to you um September eleventh, having shared it with the staff at Sheldon and the Friday prior. Um with the changes primarily to our um schools becoming K-eight, with the exception of Mountain View moving to seven-eight, um Linus Pauling becoming Corvallis Junior High for seventh and eighth graders, the closure of Sheldon and continuing to use the gyms um at Sheldon and some of those spaces because we know we need them as a community. And then um coming back later to have conversations, conversations about the feasibility of two high schools um as Laura spoke to earlier tonight. So that's where we started. Along with that, um where those dollar numbers landed, I think is also important to remember. So it reduced our overall spending by approximately one-point-eight-seven million. Next slide. And so um where, where that was, um and what we've heard from the community in terms of feedback is that we still would have a two-million-dollar additional reduction that the district would have to address for the upcoming school year um if that was the consolidation plan that was approved by the board. So um we completed four listening sessions in the community. The uh one at Sheldon and one at Linus Pauling, we had one at Lincoln and the fourth was Corvallis High School. Thanks, Teresa. Um and so we've completed four listening sessions and out of those sessions, um there were a couple of themes that were presented. One was that um there was concern that the proposal didn't go far enough because of those financial um limitations. Um also, it did laid an inevitable decision to close an elementary school. Um again, doesn't do enough to address the four-million-dollar budget shortfall. And then also doesn't address reduced elementary enrollment. One of the things we've continued to hear has been that it's challenging to have blends, blends because of um those smaller enrollments. Our specialists have been limited in their ability to be in a single school, building that school community. And some of those pieces came about in such a way that you asked me to come back with a revised proposal that included an elementary school. Um and so that's where we are right now. So the revised recommendation um is basically building off of the previous proposal. Um, there aren't significant changes to the previous proposal and the concepts that were laid out there. The change here, which is a painful one, is the, also the closure of Letitia Carson Elementary School. Students at Letitia Carson would attend um Mountain View um for part of the boundary. Um Garfield um would be a boundary s- school or those students that, who are in the Garfield boundary who are attending as sister school students would go to Catherine Jones Harrison and then students west of ninety-nine would attend Bessie Coleman. So those are the significant changes that um the proposal brings forward um for your consideration. The revised proposals, um financials go, go further. So the reduced overall spending um is at three million dollars with this proposal. Which means that we are within a million dollars of reduction, um if with this proposal. Um with this proposal, we would continue to look at reductions that are as far away from classrooms as possible. Um looking at department budgets, um which is one of the things we've tried to do as best we can to again, uh limit the number of classrooms that have been impacted, the number of specialists in schools that have been act, impacted. Um and so this brings us much closer to that number. So one of the things that I spent some time looking at was around capacity. Um, sorry, that's, okay. The brown or orange is projected enrollment. The light blue is adjusted capacity. Remembering that at our elementary schools, we're thinking about ninety percent capacity and the dark blue or navy is a one-hundred percent um capacity or full building capacity. That ninety percent is based on information that comes from architects in terms of the ability to think about capacity in schools. So with the closure of Letitia Carson, what you can see is that the um number is very close to what some of those capacities um are, the adjusted capacities. And so tho- those three buildings will be fully utilized um with the proposal. We looked at where students lived, we looked at grade levels um in terms, and, and we worked to put that together. The following slide um talks about classrooms. So in addition to the overall capacity, we looked at the number of classrooms that we have. Um with classrooms, one of the things that we continued to look at was also the number of students in classrooms. Um and the way that we um budget currently is that K through K and first grade classrooms have twenty-two students on average. Two and second and third grade have twenty-four students on average, fourth and fifth have twenty-seven students on average, six through eight have twenty-nine students and high school has thirty-one on average. And so we use those averages as we determined if there was enough space in terms of classrooms. So that gives you a picture of what the um closure of Letitia Carson would mean um to Mountain View, Catherine Jones Harrison and Bessie Coleman. I looked at a couple of other models as well. Um one of the other models I looked at was the closure of Catherine Jones Harrison. Um when we look at building capacity, um the where, the location of Catherine Jones Harrison would point students to Bessie Coleman and Letitia Carson. In that case, you can see that their um projected enrollment is slightly above the adjusted capacity um and um slightly below the building capacity. But when we look at classrooms, this, yeah, you're good. Uh but when we look at classrooms required, that would require forty-two classrooms us, utilizing those ratios by grade level and there's twenty, forty classrooms available. So there aren't enough classrooms for that proposal um to stand alone. We also looked at the closure of Adams, just again, because we're thinking about what that would mean and Adams and Lincoln are two schools that are fairly close together. Um but in closing Adams and having all those kids at Lincoln, you can see that doesn't work at, at all. And there's the co- closure of Adams, again, far too many students for, in cla- cla- in classroom needs. The other thing I looked at was I looked at Franklin. Um and what I looked at when I looked at Franklin was two things. The first thing was where students are currently living who attend Franklin. So as an example, in kindergarten, four are from Adams, two are from Bessie Coleman, one is from Garfield, three from KJH. So I broke it out that way and also looked at the total number of students by school who attend Franklin. As you know, Franklin is a non-boundary school and so there's kids that attend there from all over the district. So when I look at that, the challenge that I see is that we are looking at the other model uh which is addressing capacity. I don't see this as a model that would necessarily address capacity. Um and it would just bring in a couple of students per grade level um at each one of our schools. And so the next slide shows what that looks like with regards to capacity. Um, you can see that um many of our elementary schools stay well below capacity with that closure. The other thing that's important to note is that Corvallis Junior High, which is seventh and eighth, would absorb the seventh and eighth graders from Franklin and that goes well beyond capacity too. So here are some of the positives, I believe, of the revised proposal. Uh it addresses the majority of our proposed budget reductions. As you have felt in budget committee meetings at the, each spring, how challenging it is to come back with a brush, a budget that cuts eight million dollars and three million dollars and the impact that that has had on staff annually and the challenges that's created. It increases the enrollment numbers at Mountain View, Catherine Jones Harrison and Bessie Coleman, um which also will have an impact on our specialists in a positive way. Um as you've heard over the last several years from teachers uh who teach music and art and library and all of those who are now s- separated over multiple buildings. Building um density allows them to potentially be at a single site or more time at sites, which has a, which would be positive for them and something we've heard quite a bit about over the last several years was we made cuts. Um it also helps us to maintain um or potentially add opportunities for our students. One of the things that has been a, a strong critique is that we can just continue to lose, lose, lose in terms of what we are able to offer and this helps us to change that. It did, did require a boundary adjustment, but that red, boundary adjustment was for a single school. school. Well, I understand that feels really hard for that school. Boundary adjustments have, are historically really, really challenging. Also, we talked about that we have concerns that if we don't do anything right now with elementary, we're going to be at the table soon having this conversation because services continue to be further and further and further diluted. And so having this conversation now addresses that future issue, because with the sizes of our elementary schools being near capacity, I don't think we'll have to come back to the table to talk about that for very, for some, quite some time. Yeah, it also, like I said before, decreases the likelihood for blends to happen. Again, as you have greater capacity, you have greater flexibility in terms of the staff that you have. And also, when you have multiple colleagues to work with at the same grade level, and as you build on that, there's an opportunity for teachers to continue to build the craft of teaching and learning and be able to share with colleagues. So that's another potential opportunity that comes from this proposal. Byron's going to talk a little bit about programming, and then I'll continue on.
Hi. So at our last meeting, we had lots of questions from you all about what would this make possible, or what would this restore, or what could this look like? And we've definitely been in a period of time that has been really focused on elimination of programs or reductions of programs due to budgetary constraints. And this proposal, in many ways, allows us to start to reconsider and reimagine programming, and also start to restore possibly pieces of programming in different ways. And so our district leadership gave the, our innovation team some parameters to work from about a outline of, of a K-12 programming model, of how that could look, and what that could look like. Part of the points in this is that it supports our DLI programming continuing. It supports more equity in the access and type of learning at every single school, and also helps promote collaboration with clear philosophies and structure for every grade level. And so what we've talked about is developing grade bands, where grades are divided into bands with a certain structure and philosophy that is centered around that. And so we have talked about grades K-4 being in a self-contained model, which means it's very similar to what happens now. There's a teacher, a classroom, in a homeroom type setting where students have access to specials, and when we talk about specials, we mean library and music and PE and art throughout their day. So very similar to that experience now, but with potentially less impact on blended classrooms and larger class sizes due to schools not being at capacity right now. And then we've talked about looking at a transitional model that blends some of that homeroom idea and philosophy with some of the middle school special, specialization philosophy, meaning that in the same school, there's the K-4 model, and then also a 5-6 model. Ideas around a 5-6 model are to maintain pieces of core academics in literacy and math, but then also looking at opportunities that are like elective type opportunities that are available at middle schools, not just for sixth grade, but also for fifth grade. Because when you combine a fifth and sixth, there's more opportunity for movement and areas of specialization for that. That also means that teachers would move out of 5-6 model to be more specialized in their content, like language arts teachers or mathematics teachers and science teachers, that could allow for some deeper pieces at the fifth, sixth grade level, which can increase rigor at that level for students as well. And then because we know in the proposal that the, the plan is looking at K-6s, there'd be the K-4 and the 5-6 in operating in the same school, but that would be the same across the schools. And then because we know in the proposal, there's the 7-8 model of a junior high, a K-8, and two K-8s in that model, right? Then there's also 7-8 programming that can be similar or consistent across all 7-8 areas. And so in 7-8, really moving into a junior high model, even in the K-8s, to look at specialization and subject by teachers, to allow for that for students, that's really like that middle school type model, but helps students prepare for pathways for comprehensive high schooling. And so the idea there is you move from a K-4, which is foundations, to 5-6, which is exploratory with more specialization, to a 7-8, where you can get deeper in those specializations with more experiences and pathways for like CTE or STEM in different ways. And then a 9-12, you can move into a comprehensive high school at either CV or CHS, and you can be in more of a structured pathway that you've been prepared for, starting all the way back in your K-4 programming model. So our hope is that in some of the restructuring, we can also reimagine and also start to restore some pieces in a new way that, that we've lost in recent years due to increased capacity in buildings.
So the proposal also includes some negatives, and I included those in my report. The requirement of closure of a neighborhood elementary school, that's one of the things I had tried to avoid as best I could in that initial proposal. Closure of a building that has recently had some improvements made to it. Also the transition for some of our fifth grade students who would move for sixth grade and then over to Carvallos Junior High. And then also that closure of those two schools in the total proposal, which has an impact on two school communities, as you know, because there's lots of folks here tonight feeling passionate about that. Another consideration is that of the name Letitia Carson, that we went through that renaming process in 2021. One of the, this has been, there's been a number of challenges in this last couple of weeks around this concept. One of them was for me to reach out to Joey and James Lavador, who have given their art to the school in recognition of their ancestor, and to talk to them about the potential of this was really, was really difficult for them to hear. What I would say is that we are committed to that name and her story, and how best we are able to provide that. I've asked to continue to be in, in conversations with them about that. I also know we had a group of kids head out the next day to visit her, her property, and again, the challenges and difficulties of that. So one of the ideas that we have had is thinking about that space as an early childhood center. Currently, we work with Lynn Benton Lincoln ESD for all of our students in early childhood special education. We have four title, four Head Start programs, we have four Title, Title I schools, but we also have four Head Start programs that could all be at one location. So thinking about how do we create a, a early learning hub in that space is one idea that I think is worth pursuing and talking about, because again, we want to support our learners, and we know that those beginnings, first steps are really important. We had a community feedback session on Monday night, and we put together a report that we shared out yesterday afternoon or evening to the community and also to the board, and these were some of the key themes that came forward. The concern that, that school community is inequitably impacted because of the level of students navigating poverty, or the percentage of students navigating poverty in the school. There are some concerns about the grade configurations, K-6, K-8, and 7-8, that came up in that meeting as well. Loss of community and identity and local access, again, having it being a neighborhood school is a big deal. And that's a piece that is really a challenge for us, or will be a challenge for you as you make a decision, where do we head from here? So there was a concern about the loss of access to specialized middle school and advanced curricular offerings. I think Byron's presentation helps us to have a better vision of what that could look like. There was diminished trust because of the way this has moved quickly from the perspective of the community that was there that night. Also staffing and personnel, concerns about job loss, and the impact on faculty morale, which is seen as a challenge or harmful for kids as the morale is impacted by the decision. We also asked a question about transition and support needs. I know that there were folks who didn't want to answer that question because they felt like that, what basically preordained a decision, but those that did identified four areas that they felt needed to be supported. Orientation and social, emotional integration, how to help students adjust socially and emotionally to the new environment. Logistics, clear, detailed, and enhanced logistical support of transportation routes, student experience in the K-6 and 7-8 structure. Early, consistent, and detailed communication, transparent, proactive, and frequent communication on the decisions, especially staffing, curricular, and administrative changes. In conversations we've had with our teachers, many have, many of those conversations have been, where, where will my principal be, and how will that impact where I feel like I'm ready to be or prepared to be? And then also programmatic assurances and staff support, that programs will not only be maintained but will be robust in consolidated schools, which I've tried my best to describe earlier as well. So again, we had information shared with you that started back last spring, all the way to information that was developed over the last couple of days from the feedback on Monday night. I want to take a moment to recognize my team, because we have been working really hard to be able to bring this information forward to you, and also being able to hold, hold space for really challenging conversations, emotional conversations for a super emotional proposal that I bring forward to you. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to you if you have questions for us.
Thanks, Ryan, and everyone for your presentation. I feel like having the full presentation helps a lot. Before, we just had the, the revised proposal in front of us. I want to point out to the board that we have about 24 minutes left for questions, and would remind folk to stay concise with your questions that you have for Ryan, and we'll just do a wraparound. I think it might be nice if we started with Laura's, since she brought that forward as a student, if that's okay with you all, if we went back over to your request that you brought from CV.
Yeah, so I can take any questions or comments, because I felt like our request was pretty clear.
So I wanted to clear, I wanted to hear a little bit more about it, just to make sure I have it right. So we were part of that boundary adjustment process in 2019, 2020, and you're referring to Katherine Jones Harrison now? And your proposal is to move students from Katherine Jones Harrison to Sheldonland Middle School?
No, that was the proposal in 2020.
That was the original proposal, okay, got it.
Like want to refer back to and see if we need to change anything, and what would be a better proposal now?
Okay, so what I'm hearing is you want us to take a look at how we can send more students to CV? That's, that's the, okay, thank you.
So I'll ask a question, Ryan, and team. Would it be feasible to put into the proposal, along with the review of the high schools later on, a boundary line review for the high schools?
So I think that once this current process is complete, which to me means middle of next school year, because all the transitions will have happened, we should bring together a group of folks to talk about what our high schools are going to look like in the future. And I think having that as part of that conversation would be fine. I also think that I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver, and so I think right now with capacity, I don't think we have the capacity to answer the question right now, but I don't think that's what Laura was asking. Because her, the thing I'm wondering about is, basically to sum it up, whether or not that be through the work of the innovation team, or another team that's focused primarily on what do our high schools look like as we move forward? I could see some of that happening at Innovation, but I also think it's going to be a larger group of folks that need to come together. So I don't know that I need an answer from you tonight, but it is a way that I've been thinking about how to prepare for future changes, both in the structures of our high schools, but also in the, the needs of students moving into the world of work and career. So I think it would be valuable to have it as part of that conversation.
All right, thank you. Does that help with the request you brought forward? Okay, awesome, thank you. I think it's important also to include CHS in that conversation, too. When it happens. Okay, let's go ahead and go to questions to Ryan and team then, thank you. Judah?
Chair, I request leave to make a brief statement in lieu of a question.
Sure.
Letitia Carson refused to lay down her humanity in the face of incredible oppression. Her bravery opened up, opened her up to violence and ridicule, and yet she didn't back down. If I calibrate my moral compass with that example as north, the path forward is clear. I will not support the closure of Letitia Carson Elementary School under the circumstances and facts presented to me. I do not want to close any schools, but this is a time for difficult decisions if we want to keep or bring back many of the services we have been forced to cut and to stop chopping further. However, maintaining a school of choice while closing, closing a thriving Title I elementary school in an area also facing the possible closure of a beloved middle school represents a bare-faced inequity to me. I understand there are downsides with some ability to add back what are known as specials to the highest degree with my proposal. In the scope of give and take, in which sacrifices to pick, I take a knowing stand. I will not ask one specific portion of my community to bear the majority of the consolidation burden, but I will bear responsibility for whatever decision the board makes. I request a new proposal be brought forward. Thank you.
I do have to remind the public that I know that, that you get excited, and it will start adding into the time if we do a pauses, because it pauses everything, and that's going to happen with public comment, too, so.
Chair, I do have two points of inquiry and order. The first one, after I make that point of order, I would like my colleague to repeat the last sentence, the two sentences I couldn't hear genuinely. And also, just want to remind folks to the point that you mentioned, I would really think it's important because of prior rulings in courts, that if we allow appreciation, we have to allow condemnation, or we have to agree as a community that we will support folks to speak without either one. So I just want to make sure that if we are agreeing of appreciation, voices of appreciation, we have to allow voices of condemnation, and, and I just want to put that there.
Right, okay, so that's what I was getting to, like if we're going to be cheering and booing, that's going to cause, I think that's going to cause an issue for flow, is what I'm trying to say, and I'm, and I'm really trying to keep the board on sync with getting our questions answered, so we have more time for public comment, which is also going to be limited. And so that, I just wanted to make sure that folk were aware of why I keep reminding you all of that, and I'm taking up more time explaining it, too. And what was your other part, Sammy? Because I don't, you didn't hear what the rest of what?
Yeah, I didn't hear like the last two sentences.
I think it was pretty clear, but if you need him to repeat it.
I think I got the sentiments, but just want to make sure I can hear it.
It's up to you, Judah.
Last two sentences are, "I will not ask one specific portion of my community to bear the majority of the consolidation burden, but I will bear responsibility for whatever decision this board makes. I request a new proposal be brought to the board."
Okay, thanks, Judah. Any other questions from the board? Bernie?
Ryan, I, I appreciate your work and also the detail that you have brought, but there's one detail I want to ask specifically about is the geographic location. As you can see, your proposal impacts two schools, Sheldonland as well as Letitia Carson. As somebody who lives in that neighborhood, that's a big gap from, from the center of the city to, and then the next school is Mountain View. So have you, did you consider the geographic implications of this proposal?
We considered the geographic implications of the proposal, in addition to if the, the task that I felt like I was asked to complete was to come back with a proposal with the closure of an elementary. with a proposal with the closure of an elementary school and looking at how to best add density in terms of numbers in the schools that remained open. I don't have another proposal that works like that. And so that's why I looked at, you know, I gave examples. And so that's why I came up with a proposal related to Letitia Carson. One of the factors there that made that possible is that that boundary has three school boundaries attached to it. So having the ability for students to go sort of in those three locations was a big piece because if you have a school with two, that are only pointed in two directions, we're not going to be above capacity generally speaking. So I understand that's a challenge for Northeast Crevalis.
Go ahead, Teresa.
So I, my question kind of dovetails on Bernie's and hits at what you're just talking about now with my understanding then, if I, if I got this correct is that the proposal also, it, it's only reassigning the boundaries related to the area of Letitia Carson, right? So it doesn't look at boundaries anyplace else. So, so I guess my question is, would any other school work if you adjusted more than one school's boundary to accomplish that? For example, if you chose Catherine Jones Harrison in your proposal instead, and you can't move those kids to just two schools, what if, what would happen, say, if Garfield's boundary shifted and moved kids toward Letitia Carson so that there was space? You see what I'm saying? Like a ripple effect of, if you looked at more than one school continuously, is there a scenario in which another school besides Letitia Carson suddenly, the numbers can work?
Yeah, I think that if we're going down that road, we probably should just do a whole new boundary process. The problem with that is that each one of our elementary schools is going to be small in terms of capacity. And so we will continue to have the same challenges where we will have specialists across multiple buildings, more blended classrooms, some of the things that this proposal tried to avoid.
Okay. And then one thing I just, if you could just repeat this and then I'll move on to, someone else can go, but could you restate why closing Franklin did not work with like capacity at Linus Pauling? I tried to see the chart, but it's very far away from here, so.
Yeah, yeah, beyond the aspect of elementary density, having one classroom per level, it really has, having all the seventh and eighth graders in that model, it does have one seventh and one eighth at Mountain View. But beyond that, all those students combined at Linus Pauling is, I don't know what I said.
They didn't get the memo, I think, about the not.
Got it. So the, where was I? Oh yeah, so Crevalis Junior High would be above capacity if we had the seven, sixth, seventh, or the seventh and eighth graders from Franklin there.
Okay. And so then does that mean that Mountain View can only have capacity for one seven and one eight? And does this change if Mountain View's capacity goes from one seventh and eighths to two seventh and two eighth grade classes? Does that mean that then we wouldn't need the space at Franklin if that was possible? You might not know the answer to that right at this moment, but.
I'd have to do the math on it. We have, so thinking about Mountain View as a K eight, we have thought that adding one seventh and one eighth grade for next year shows that we're building that out. We're not sure about the ability or the need for two sevens and two eights quite yet. But there are spaces that we would come back to having conversations about and potentially modify in order for that to have two sevens and two eights. It's possible, it's just take some shuffling.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ryan, I'm going to jump in, I usually go last, but we're just going to go down the line right now. And I wanted to ask a question because it kind of, it refers a little bit back to Judah's statement, is if we added more time to this process, how would that impact operationalizing anything that the board decides?
It is going to be really challenging. When we spoke to staff at Sheldonland and Linus Pauling, they're asking for a quicker timeline because they want to know where they're going to be and where their principals are going to be and how to best support students in those transitions. We have to think about the logistics of moving lots of, lots of materials and planning for students in new spaces. Budget processes start in December, and so we're going to be building based on some assumptions otherwise. I don't, I am not, I would not encourage as your advisor just to modify the timeline. I think if you're going to modify the proposal, then you should look at the first proposal. But I don't think that I would slow down. Our association president wanted to speak tonight but didn't get here in time because of all the public testimony, to be able to advocate for that. But I know that that is both association presidents have asked that we can move quickly in order to take care of the folks that we have.
Thank you. And for Letitia Carson's name, maintaining her name and her legacy is really important, not just to like the school communities, but like you said, her descendants, her family. And it's also important to the Oregon Black Pioneers and the Letitia Carson Legacy Project that have built all of these relationships. And I'm wondering, in the N A C P, how we could look at a larger, if this proposal goes through with this one conversation, would that be feasible to think about moving the name to another school perhaps?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. We're just going to go around to.
It just takes action of the board.
To be able to request that?
Yeah, to change, to do a name change requires your action.
Yes, I remember.
I know you know that.
I was like, I remember because we did that for this name.
But I also just for, for.
For folk who don't know, yes, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, go, Shauna.
Thank you for your presentation. I know this is really tough. Nobody wants to come to work today and make these kind of decisions or have to do this kind of work. My question is, what is the percentage of Letitia Carson students who live in the Letitia Carson boundary?
Pretty close to two thirds, I would say, just like off, off the top of my head. Because about thirty-seven ish percent don't live in the boundary.
Don't live in the boundary, okay.
For many, for many of those students, they are there because of the sister school aspect.
Because of Garfield?
Yeah, and that's why thinking about having them transition to Catherine Jones Harrison made sense in my mind because it's a close proximity for those students to, it has a huge boundary, you know, it goes out Peoria Road for Garfield. But generally speaking, many of those families are close to that building and could access K J H.
Closer.
Yeah.
And then, did you say that keep, if going with the proposal that you've presented, that that will maintain or maybe will add back specials to some of the other schools, to the other elementary?
Yeah, I'm going to under promise on this. Honestly, we are looking at, is it a matter of maintaining or bringing some back? And I think that there's the possibility that we'd be able to bring some back. With the reductions of the $3 million, that would not be the case in, in that initial proposal to the same degree. You want to go?
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Okay. So there's two different things that people ask, and one is around staffing. So it, it will most definitely in the K six model and in the revised proposal would increase our P E, music and art staffing using the current model. And that is accounted for in the plan. It might, what we're, I think what Ryan is speaking to is the amount of instructional minutes that, that students would get in those specials. And we, when we had talked about this in the last budget cycle, it's really hard to balance the amount of minutes that they receive in those subject areas. And also making sure that they have the right amount of time for math and literacy and those pieces. So yes, it would increase F T E and the portion of the amount of minutes that students receive in those programming areas in the model is maintained. And we know that it's the desire of many to add back more time. And I think that's the part that Ryan is speaking to, that we know that and we're working with that, but we're not sure on that piece yet.
And I do want to emphasize, I spoke to Krista, the union president, and she really did say, all staff in the district are really asking us to continue with our timeline as presented and that they, there's, you know, their work and livelihood is all centered around this and this could have a trickling effect, not just the two schools. And so a lot of people are going to be affected by this and that timing is really important for them to get that information.
Based on collective bargaining agreements, all schools would be, have shifts and moves. Another example was a conversation I had at our, with our high school principals earlier this week as they're thinking about forecasting, you know, which staff members they will have in order to teach some of those advanced courses. The folks who have the training to be able to teach M A P, chemistry and some of those pieces, there is the possibility with the middle school change that some of that will change as well. And so how do we prepare for forecasting now, understanding that some of those positions may change? Obviously, you can provide people with training, but that collective bargaining agreements impact staff across all of our schools because of the seniority component.
Sammy or Shauna, did you have questions?
Yeah, thank you again for, for you, Ryan, your staff, for the community really for helping us navigate such a really critical decision that I, I know it's, it's hard and we need to understand what we can do. So the questions are going to help me really inform myself and hopefully the community who ask me some questions. One of them is a request. I know probably some highlights of the capacity summary exists in your presentation, but I'm wondering if I could have our revised consolidation proposal capacity summary similar to the table that we got for the initial proposal. That will really help me visualize the utilization and the projected enrollment between, amongst schools and also compare it to the initial proposal relatively, if that's, that's okay. Shall I go for my next question? So my next question is, I'm trying to visualize three-legged stool and help me out if, is this true or, or from this discussion or do you want to modify it? Our budget is like three-legged stool and we want to balance it. The three legs are density of facilities, more buildings or less buildings. Another leg is staffing density, the ability to do P E, music, arts, or in one building have a staffing that can be dedicated for a certain subject. So you could either have less or more of that. The third one is programming depth and minutes, which is how many programs can we offer or maintain? Are these the three things at tension and we're trying now to solve one leg of it, which is the density in order to protect the other two?
I think I'm going to come back with the chair. There's a fourth, there's a fourth leg for sure, and that is where we are right now with state and federal funding. I'm going to be paying close attention to the November economic forecast. The Department of Ed has already been asked to go through the process of considering 2.5 or a 5% cut to current funding. That, the last time that happened was in 2008, and that's when school districts across the state had to move to furlough days. And that is when things changed mid-year. In that case, the budget changed twice during a single school year. At the federal level, we know that there are folks that are hurting right now based on changes that are being made. We have some, some dollars that were held back and we've had to fight to get those releases that were already appropriated by the House to help with our title programs. I don't think that necessarily is going to come through again in the upcoming year. I mean, we can't even get back to the table at this point. So I'm worried about funding beyond that, the dollars that we've shared here, if any of those things happen.
Thank you. Actually, this touches on a list of very quick yes or no, or maybe a little bit of context of the assumptions we have, and maybe you laid out that in previous weeks and months. Just want to reiterate them. This revised proposal assumes multiple things. Number one, we are, we did not factor any potential additional cuts that we're seeing from the state and the federal government. This is what you shared with us, Ryan, just now. Did we factor the annexations, the developments that have been going on or that might be happening in the near future in the city of Crevalis?
Yes, because those were a part of the enrollment and demographic study that we had conducted in the spring. So that plays into our enrollment and enrollment drives the budget. So yes, that, as far as the, the annexations and the potential for housing, obviously that, that information was based off of what was in progress as of January 2025. So anything that's happened, anything new since then is not. But we also have a lot of data from past years and how new developments have impacted enrollment. As far as the, the funding pieces go, I want to be very clear and continually reiterate, this is not a budget. This is a model and keeping as many variables the same as we can. So we are just looking at the, the shift of where students go and how that impacts staffing. And then staffing has a dollar attached to it. So we just need to be careful and understand that. I'm, I would say the only assumption that we put in there is, is knowing that the cost of all of our staff salaries goes up every year based on the collective bargaining agreement. So that assumption is in there, that everybody will get their step and a cola. But as far as changes to federal funding or state funding and all of that, like that's too complex to put in this model, that will be the assumptions that you'll review when we look at an actual budget. This is not a budget.
Sammy, I need to let Shauna ask a question because we're running out. Do you have, was that, can you email your questions to Ryan perhaps?
Yeah, this is good, thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to put my thoughts together. I know we're taking in a lot of information tonight, carrying a lot of thoughts and information from the listening sessions as well, and just really want to share gratitude for folks for, for being here. So thank you, Ryan and, and team for the incredibly difficult work these last many months in, in doing this. This isn't easy. And, and I was thinking about Ms. Mudd who came in, had the last public, public comment and spoke about the work that keeps educators in this field, keeps educators excited about doing this, and this is not that work. And I just want to recognize how hard and heavy it is and the care you've put into a really impossible situation. So thank you for that. When we were asked, when we asked for a revised budget, what led me to ask for that, I know, was both, what's that, revised proposal, I'm sorry, thank you. Yeah, thank you. You can tell where I am tonight in terms of just grounding myself both in what I've written and also realizing I'm, my thoughts are changing as we go.
It's totally fine, I understand.
Thank you.
These are hard things to do and talk about.
Well, in thinking about that ask for a revised proposal, thank you, some of that came from the community saying, we really need to think deeply about this so that we are not continuing down this line of just feeling like we're continually losing staff, continually losing programs, continually losing as a district. What do we have to look forward to? And the tough budget conversations we've had these past years around preserving libraries, music, arts, electives, honors and A P classes. And I know in our, our role as a board, we don't have an opportunity to say, this is how we'd like the budget to be spent. But one of the tools we have this year is to, is to really look at, well, how do we try and create and find more funding in any way we can so that the district can do that? And after reviewing the revised proposal, hearing from the community and really reflecting on the impact of it, I'll be honest and sharing that I've come in with, with really hard and serious concerns and reservations about closing an elementary school this year. And in hearing from the school community, something that's really come out, up from the Letitia Carson community is that this is a school where students feel loved. And that was a word that I heard over and over at the listening sessions and over and over in emails. And I like to believe that that's true at all of the schools in this district. And something that I really appreciated from the community too, and I promise I'll get to a question, was not a lack of understanding that hard decisions have to be made, but the question of, do they all have to be made right now? And how can we all come along in a, in a process that's transparent, that doesn't feel like a shock? that doesn't feel like a shock, that feels like we, the conclusions that we had to draw, we all came along together on those conclusions? So, I also want to recognize that for the community in terms of this feeling like a sudden decision, a sudden shock, and, and what that must feel like, and, and carrying that with us. We know that closing one or more elementary schools is inevitable. And I'd like to, I guess the question that I'm, I'm getting around to is really thinking about the feasibility of closing a school this year versus next year, and recognizing that from my under, my own understanding, going deeper with consolidation now actually has the potential to preserve more staff. If a school closes this year, more staff are saved overall. More programs are saved, more specials are saved. And if we pause, on the other hand, it does give time to build or rebuild trust, to bring the community along on that process, but more could be lost in the long term as well. And so, some questions that I think I'm holding on to are, I'll just also say, it also sits really heavily with me that both in, in holding the desire to, to bring the community along, to slow down the process, to really think carefully and make sure decisions are transparent, that they are clear to the community why they're being made. That trade-off of not consolidating deeply enough, losing more staff, losing more programs, and ultimately, in thinking about that K through six or K through eight model, Byron, that you shared about tonight, and worrying that shifting to that model, if that's what we vote on, won't have enough resources to do it well. And so, then you get not only this big shift to K through six, K through eight models, and none of the programs that the community hoped for came with that. And that is a really big problem, too. So, putting all that together, I think my questions come around to, I know Lou, you already asked a little bit about slowing down anyway within this year. What are the, the trade-offs of waiting another year before really considering an elementary school closure and feasibility, whether it's this year or next year, of revisiting the process for that choice? Tonight helped in terms of having more data than we've seen, more data than was in the revised proposal, to help the community understand a little more, to help us understand a little more. But really thinking about where are the opportunities for slowing? And what do we lose or gain by doing that? Thank you.
So, if we move forward without adopting one of the consolidation proposals, again, budgeting hasn't started, these are general numbers, but I anticipate we will lose about twice as many staff as what is in this proposal, which will then increase class sizes significantly at all of our schools. So, that is one very immediate and clear trade-off, if that's what we choose to do.
Can I stop you just for a second? So, when you're saying that, you're talking about not making either decision?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, if we don't move forward with either. So, it just depends on, on how things, what the decision ends up being. But in order to balance the budget, which we are legally required to do, we will, we will have to cut significant amount of staff. And the only way to do that with, and maintain all of our schools being open will be to increase class sizes. And I know that from community feedback, that is not the desire, nor is it the desire of the leaders sitting at this table, or I think any of you. So, depending on where we go with the, the proposals, that will be the impact. If we move forward with the original proposal, that is most likely still going to look like an excess reduction in staff and, and increased class sizes. And part of the struggle there, I think, is a lot of what you said, Shawna, is will we have the resources to do the models, our new model of K six and the bands that Byron spoke to? Will we be, will we have the resources to be able to do that well? And that will be extremely challenging to do. And so, there's more that goes into this decision than just finances, right? But the finances are what start and drive the conversation, I think. And so, I can speak to that piece, and I don't want it to feel like I'm like pushing a proposal because of the, the financial piece. It's, it's, it's about more than that. But there will be impacts if, if we choose to go that direction.
And I would add, when schools are at a higher, higher capacity of staff and staff time in those spaces, it allows for greater flexibility in how you do programming and scheduling and pieces for students. I've been a principal of a school that's been really big and has had full-time all-staff. I've been a principal of a school that's been really small. And the flexibility that is there when there are more staff just in a building is a lot, you can do a lot more things creatively, because our teachers and our staff are amazing and creative thinkers. And I know that when there's more together, they can do more. When there's, when there's less, my experiences have been you're stressed because you're doing many jobs and maybe teaching multiple grade levels, and you don't have as greater amount of people to help lift and do the work together. And so, that, that's also a trade-off to think about.
I think another, just one last piece I would add to that, that we didn't, I didn't mention is blends, and blends have been something that through community feedback that we've received, that, that I think parents, I will say parents, I'm a parent myself of a student in the district, don't want their child in a blend. And so, if we do not move forward with one of the models, you will see more blends as well because we have to reduce staff, and that goes into the, the class size conversation as well, but.
Is there, just following up on that feasibility piece, one thing that's come through community feedback has been a request for external review. And I'm wondering if there's any feasibility around, you know, even if, whether an external reviewer looked at numbers and said, you know, the revised proposal or the proposal you have makes a lot of sense right now versus there are some things that haven't been thought about that really need to be considered? I'm just wondering about feasibility for that, that could both help the community in coming along and, and looking at transparency, as well as us and looking at, okay, is this plan the sound as it can be versus are there avenues that really need to be considered that haven't yet?
That would be something we would need to research and come back to you with at a, at a future date.
Bernie only asked one question, did you have a bunch of questions too, Bernie? I know we're like, I know we want to hear from the community is the hard part. We have a lot of questions, and I do want to, because it has been brought up numerous times and also in this conversation amongst the board as well. I do want to ask about what the proposal and the potential, the new one to remove the blended grades, which you're also talking about. And that's something I know we've heard about a lot, especially in budget season, about blended classes. Would it be possible to have that same impact? I don't, basically, you already showed a chart, so my guess is maybe not as much. If Franklin was closed, would that impact that possibility?
I don't think it would, just because of the number of students that would head back to each grade at each elementary school. I don't think that would be a significant enough number of students, as you saw on the second graph, in terms of capacity and students in the buildings. There's still a pretty big difference between those two pieces, so I don't think that that necessarily would solve that problem for the, for that want.
Okay. And Laura has, real quick.
Could you explain the special facilities at Catherine Jones Harrison, the life skills program, and what would the possibility of potentially moving it?
Yeah, so, at Catherine Jones Harrison, some of the facility features that are, are different are in both of the life skills classroom spaces that have been re-remodeled, both have ADA compliant bathrooms built on to those classrooms inside, where there's spaces and rooms for like changing tables or foyer lifts or things that are needed. Also, a number of years ago, in a bond project, the, the playground at Catherine Jones Harrison is also an inclusive playground. And so, it's not just ADA accessible, but also an inclusive playground where there's ramps and accessibility features for, for students in the program there as well. So, that's like facility-wise, that, that is, those are some of those factors.
And then, what would the feasibility of, like, changing the facilities at another school to fit that standard?
Um, based on bathroom updates and different pieces like that and, and current construction costs, I think to, the playground factor, as well as the bathrooms, we're probably talking a million-plus dollars to make those adjustments at a school, which would then also remove space at those schools that would change their capacity and the amount of classrooms and other pieces. So, it, it would be impactful.
Thank you all. I want to ask really quickly before we move on. With the uncertainty of federal and state funding, which is a huge reality, I don't know if people are watching that or not, but it is in, in this current biennium. And even if we looked at that combined with consolidation, should we start talking about reserves soon?
I think that the difference between 2008, which many districts furloughed because the, the dollars sent to school districts changed twice during that year and went down. The difference between that and right now is that at the state level, the state has reserves. They didn't really have reserves in 2008, so there's a difference there. At the same time, when we have had conversations around reserves, those conversations have been around emergency situations. As of right now, we have, we're still able to provide food to our kids during school, during school, but SNAP benefits are cut off. I didn't think there's so many unknowns and factors that I would strongly advise the board, that if you're going to have the conversation, it should be in this context of the current, the new reality that we may face. So, I know that is not necessarily saying yay or nay. I just think we have to be paying close attention to those things. And again, the thing, the thing that will give us information soonest is the revenue forecast in the middle of November at the state level, and that will tell, begin to tell the story.
Okay, so, okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Can I also just remind everyone that the reserves is about one month of our operating expenditures? That's, I think that's important context, just for, I know you guys know that, but for the community to, to keep that in mind. It's a large dollar amount, but when we're talking about school district operations, it's about a month.
That's why I was asking, because you mentioned furlough, and I know that there's some constraints with federal and state dollars. And I was thinking about, like, that seems like we may end up in a conversation soon that's tangentially related to this, that could be exacerbated if we don't make a decision about something with it. So, I, I don't want us to stall out in the conversation tonight, but what do you need from us, Ryan, before we move forward?
I guess I need guidance. I need guidance on if you want me to begin to work on a third proposal, if you want me to stand with where we are. I think I'm, I'm a little unsure.
Sammy?
Appreciate that question to us. I feel I have unanswered questions, and also, we want to hear from the community before I feel comfortable deliberating. If I may ask one quick question?
Sure, and I just wanted to ask a process question, because I know you are going to.
Okay.
Yeah, we all have process questions too, so, is it a process question?
Sure.
Go ahead, yeah.
The process question, could we hear from, could we postpone deliberation on this agenda item until we go for public comments and come back to deliberation?
We have actually expired the entirety of our time on this topic on the agenda, so the board would have to agree to that, if you all are open to that, which we would have to be mindful of, it's 8 o'clock as well. Yes.
So, along those lines, I do, I feel like, I, oh, thank you for the presentation, and I think that it helped tremendously with putting, understanding the summary of the revised proposal as we'd received it. It also generated questions that I, I didn't even know I probably wanted to talk about, and so, I'm trying to figure out or think through, what's the best step forward? Because I think that I'm, maybe I'm not alone in this, that some of these questions, I feel like the answers to them will be helpful to me in figuring out if I would actually want to entertain another proposal. And I don't know if I could know that right at this moment. And we are like, how many minutes over now on the allocated time? And a roomful of people that would like to talk to us, and when's our next meeting? Yeah, and so, I, I, okay, so, that's my question, is what do we do with the unanswered questions? Is there a process we could entertain that would give us space to either submit those questions and then add another opportunity to talk? Or I'll stay here till midnight? If that's the, if that's the way we need to do it, then that's fine with me. But I, I don't know what our options are.
There's, there has been one ask about an additional meeting for the board for potentially perhaps on Monday, but that means we would have to notice it tomorrow. And I don't know if we can pull that off that fast. And so, that's what I'm kind of worried about, too. But I feel comfortable if we pause our conversations so we can hear from the public, and then we come back to this and see where the, where we're at on time and, and capacity, because conversations, when you're exhausted, and are also not as helpful sometimes just for the sake of continuing to conversate about something. So, I just wanted to point that out, too, and think we should move on to public comment at this time. After, there's been a request for a five-minute break as well, so we can transition things for a public comment as well. So, if we can put a five-minute break on the, on the meeting place for the YouTube. Thank you, Ryan and team. Read it again. They didn't hear it. On the live stream, so I need to restate, restate all of this. Yes, okay. Um, thank you for hearing all of my suggestions and the public comment. Um, we do have to abide by um public meeting laws, so if the recordings are not audible, we do have to repeat things um to comply with that, just so you all know. So again, as I mentioned earlier, that um we have added public comment meetings. We usually hear them during our business meetings, and this is, um, so we've been trying to make sure that we have public comment available at each of our meetings during this time. And um we also expanded our time from, are usually, we have twenty minutes for public comment. We expanded to thirty, and we have um forty, right? Kim, public comments? Thirty? We have thirty-six um comments, counting the ones online? Okay, so we have thirty-six this evening, um which unless you all are talking very brief comments, we're not going to probably get to potentially everybody, and we will likely extend our time. But um we'll revisit that once the thirty minutes is up. And again, as the tips, if you are new to public commenting, if you have heard somebody say your statement you were going to make already, you're welcome to come up and say, I agree with the statement that has been made earlier on this topic. If your question was answered, you can also come up and say, my question has been answered. That way it allows more time for additional community members to have their voices heard as well. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and read the, read the public comment script one more time. Thank you for bearing with me, everybody. We will now open the public comment period. We value the lived experiences of students, families, staff, and the community, and welcome public comment as an essential part of the district and board's work. The complete guidelines for public comment are available at the registration table outside the boardroom entrance and on the board's website. I will now share some important points. When it is your turn to speak, please come forward, take a seat, and direct your comments to the board. Make sure your mic is on with the little red light, and there's a little person button to turn that on. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the board will not hear complaints concerning individual district personnel. As a reminder, you will have three minutes to make your comments. The light is green when your time starts and the timer in front of you turns yellow when there's thirty seconds, and your time is up when it turns red, at which point I will need to ask you to um to conclude your statement. Following your comments, the board will have three minutes to ask clarifying questions but are not able to engage in conversation, which again is the hardest part sometimes for us. And if you're asking us a question, we will not be able to answer it um during the public comment period. If board members would like to revisit a topic or issue brought up during public comment, they may do so at the appropriate time in the agenda. Before you start your comments, please state your name for the record and state whether you reside within the school district boundary. Okay, now we can...
Susanna?
Your mic's off, Kim.
No, I've got the mic, sorry. Susanna, you can unmute and start your public comment.
Hello. My name is Susanna Davis, and I am a parent and community member whose kids go to Sheldon and Letitia Carson. I am also a research scientist with a P- PhD in education, whose work focuses on educational leadership, policy, and change. I am deeply concerned about the revised proposal to close Letitia Carson Elementary and the rushed process surrounding it and the proposed closure of Sheldon. Families and community members have not been given enough time, information, or transparency to understand or respond thoughtfully. The proposal lacks the necessary financial and equity analyses to justify closing a neighborhood Title I school that serves many low-income and historically marginalized families. The projected savings of roughly one million dollars for closing Letitia Carson will not meaningfully address the short-term four-million-dollar shortfall or the ongoing eleven-million-dollar annual shortfall starting in fiscal year twenty-seven, but it will cause disproportionate harm to low-income students and families. The district should pause this rushed process, share transparent data, and engage the community in developing fair, sustainable solutions that align with the evidence-based Oregon PTA's School Closure Advisory Guidance and Corvallis School District's stated values. Specifically, such a process would include conducting an external unbiased evaluation of multiple different school consolidation options, as well as unexplored options related to reducing district administrative expenditures. This would include publishing side-by-side operating cost comparisons for all schools. It would provide a clear, quantifiable explanation for how each criterion, including cost, enrollment, equity, facility condition, and location, was measured and weighted for every single school. The current proposal would inflict lasting harm on a low-income community for minimal financial benefit. It's imperative that the district approach this in an equitable, evidence-based, and sustainable way. Yes, Corvallis is experiencing a very real budget crisis. School consolidation is likely necessary, but we need to slow down and evaluate all the options and not make hasty decisions that increase inequities in our city and that we will regret. Thank you.
Thank you, Susanna. Any questions from the board? There's no questions from the board. Um, Susanna, thank you for your time this evening.
Shun? You can unmute.
Okay. All right. Hello, um, I'm Shun Tien Moe Tzu. I reside in the Corvallis School District Boundary.
Shun, we cannot hear you. Hold on one second.
Well, twenty seventeen for another neighbor level, saying that they're in the state of Corvallis School and parts my daughter. By the way, my daughter went to Letitia Carson, and now she's going Sheldon, one of them anyways. Between work, school conferences, enclosure, uh enclosures, and childcare, I've had probably only about three or four hours to talk to people between Monday night and tonight, mostly within, within my neighborhood. The main response I got was surprise. There wasn't much knowledge of the proposal, especially among households about kids. Several knew of the proposal, was not even aware of Letitia Carson being on the chopping block now. Another, another response was, this approval. Uh, I asked people if they thought eight or nine weeks for Sheldon closure and three weeks for Letitia Carson closure was reasonable. The primary response was, absolutely not. So far, I only got around the Letitia Carson zone area, and many people were concerned about the loss of the central community hub. Couldn't understand why the community was not pulled in to help lead the proposal process, not just react to it. I also saw thankfulness. Many people appreciate that I was taking action, even for fruitless, and helps of doing the community right. My takeaway from canvassing was connection. I had a chance to connect the neighbors that I didn't frequently interact with, catch up. I've had the opportunity to talk and connect with the folks in greater neighborhoods, families uh with kids that uh are acquaintances of mine, new neighbors that I haven't, haven't had a chance to connect with. Another was discovery. Mr. Shun Buki, my neighbor two doors down, called my boy who was planning to speak, uh planning to speak tonight, shared me, shared with me ongoing major water quality issues at some schools in the district. I thought I was raising awareness uh, you know, among my neighbors and community, but apparently I have the warning on my own. If one father spending his PTO, talking to neighbors, can um unearth something like this, what can an actual team of community experts unearth what's the best choice? In conclusion, canvassing is fun, raise awareness, and rekindle community connections, and it only takes time. I highly recommend it. One other thing I'd like to ask you about is the presentation titled Closing Schools, Not Communities. I'm going to read quotes. Over the past several years, districts across the state have faced significant budget constraints. In Corvallis, this challenge prompted the development of a community-engaged budget process designed to ensure transparency and shared decision-making. At the same time, the district undertook a comprehensive long-range facilities review. Together, these efforts informed the district's consolidation plan, joining us to learn more about the process, the stages of community involvement, and how this work has shaped our final consolidation proposal. I very much would like to know why district and board leadership are traveling and presented together during a dire budget shortage to take what sounds like a victory lap about the process that, at the Oregon State Board Association National Conference on November seventh, a week before final deliberations and decision on the school consolidation process. Regardless of what this entails, this is a pretty bad look. Thank you.
Thank you, Shun. Any questions? Shun, I have a question for you. Um, do you, do you know what the purpose of the conference is?
Mic still on?
Yeah. Did you hear the question? Did you hear the question, Shun?
I think I'm done. I don't hear anything. Um, Shun, is it okay?
I don't think he heard the question. We're going to move on. Thank you, Shun.
Melissa Byrd. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. This is a bag full of food. My name is Dr. Melissa Byrd, and I have two children in high school at CV. One is a senior and one a freshman. Thank you for the intention and communication you have put into the process of school consolidation. I'm very grateful for your leadership and transparency during this difficult time in our cities and nation's history. Your job is made more difficult because of the system of school funding within which we operate. I'm here today because I'm deeply concerned about the federal government's decision to cut SNAP benefits for our families, elders, and people with disabilities. As you know, the community eligibility provision of... As you know, the community eligibility provision of the free breakfasts and lunches provided to all of our children by CSD are directly related to the number of children who receive SNAP benefits. Twenty-six percent of people in Corvallis live in poverty. The poverty rate for the Corvallis School District is eighteen-point-four percent, approximately ten percent higher than the rate in Benton County, and more than one-point-five times the rate in Oregon as a whole. Every single person and family in this building and online will be affected by the withdrawal of food benefits for children and their families. Grocery prices for all of us to cover these losses, stores' experience will go up because of the loss of SNAP benefits, and our farmer's market is going to be impacted. I'm here today because I've seen the online chatter in the community regarding concerns for our poorest students in the school consolidation plan. If people in our community are so concerned about those of us who are living paycheck to paycheck and skipping meals, stressed about how our children are going to eat during the day, why are they not expending their energy spreading the word about our most vulnerable students going without food at home and at school? How many of the people in this room brought non-perishable items to donate to the school district food drive? How many posted online in forums like Corvallis Conversations, Corvallis Happenings, or any other social media forums talking about our kids going hungry or potentially losing their healthcare? I worry about our community when so many people are spreading, spending an enormous amount of energy accusing the school board of sometimes a secret plot about the school consolidation plan when the board has been honest from the beginning about this process. I wonder what kind of change we could all make as a community if we were as equally outraged about the reality that our families' food resources are unraveling before our very eyes. I hope the school board is able to spend their precious time not just moving forward on the consolidation plan, but also moving forward with figuring out a way for how we are going to feed our children as the governor has declared a state of food emergency in the state of Oregon. Thank you.
We have to see if anybody has any questions real quick. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Shawna.
Thank you, Melissa. I see that you brought a bag of food to, you mentioned to donate to the district's collection. Do you have other recommendations for the community in terms of where, how to donate at this time?
Yeah, one of the things that I've been doing is taking the flyers around that the foundation put on Facebook and putting those flyers and taking them around and putting them in all the coffee shops and the churches. And I've really been trying to engage with the community to let them know that this is happening. I also think that me reaching out to our neighbors and letting, you know, asking our neighbors if they're okay, like if they need anything, um is also really important. And also the grocery, um buying grocery gift cards is really important because so many people have food restrictions or dietary restrictions. So me assuming that this is gonna be good for everybody is not necessarily the most awesome, although, you know, it's the food we had in our pantry, and so.
Any other questions? I had one question. You said that your family's impacted by this, yet you brought a bag of food with you, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, we are living paycheck to paycheck and just trying to figure out how to make it all work and and I still figured it was a good thing for us to contribute to the community.
Thank you for your time, Melissa.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Crystal Overvig and I reside within the Corvallis School District. So I'm a mother of four, one at Sheldon and three at Mountain View. I'm here tonight as a parent asking you to pause this process and give our community the time, care, and transparency this decision deserves. Back in early September, my husband urged the board to slow down and take the needed, take the time needed to make thoughtful, community-driven decisions. Since things ha- things have only sped up, especially with the new proposal to close Letitia Carson, added on top of the original plan. That's not just disappointing, it goes against the best practices recommended by the Oregon PTA School Consolidation Advisory Guidance, which calls for a seven-to-twelve-month process to gather data, engage families, and plan responsibly. That standard exists for a reason, to make sure families understand what's happening, have time to ask questions, and help shape a fair and transparent plan. Rushing through closures in eight weeks for Sheldon and three weeks for Letitia Carson isn't real engagement. It's a shortcut through the very process that builds trust. Your mission statement talks about trust, inclusivity, and engagement, and those are powerful words, but right now, it's hard to see those values in action. When decisions this big are on the table, closing schools, moving hundreds of students, and reshaping entire neighborhoods, families should be treated as partners, not spectators. Closing Letitia Carson, a Title I school serving many of our most vulnerable families, isn't equity, it's the opposite. It takes away a walkable, community-rooted school and replaces it with longer commutes, higher costs, and less access for the families who already face the most barriers. Those children deserve stability, not disruption. This is, this isn't just about buildings, it's about people. Nearly every proposal so far has targeted the North and the Corvallis School District, Sheldon, Mountain View, and now Letitia Carson. Families in this part of the district are being asked to absorb the biggest changes, and it sends a message, sends a message that our schools and our students are easier to No one is asking the district to avoid the hard choices. We're asking for honest, data-driven planning, uh really, school-by-school financials so the community can see the facts and form a representative community advisory committee that includes every neighborhood. Corvallis families want collaboration, not a fight, but collaboration requires trust, and trust begins with transparency. Please slow down the process, let's build the plan together, and show our students that this district practices the same values it teaches: honesty, respect, and genuine partnership.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Go ahead, Therese.
Thank you for sharing. Uh, my question for you around the, so pausing the process, so in the timeline that you referenced, um, that would mean that it wouldn't actually be feasible to close a school for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, am I understanding correctly that, on that timeline, right?
Right.
Okay. So in your reflection on this, because it sounds like you have thought a lot about this, and I don't know, you have shared a couple of times with us, what, what is your, what's your thinking about how to balance the benefits of slowing down the process with the the gap and what might potentially occur in our, well, not potentially, would occur in our schools while we are coming up with an alternative approach? Do you have thoughts about that?
Um, I don't have thoughts. Um, yeah, sorry. Forgot we're not so elaborate too much, but yeah.
No worries.
Yeah.
I wasn't expecting you to have an itemized list for us, but, but I was curious in conversations if if ideas have come up. We've, we've, um, we've appreciated the feedback from the community and the ideas that have been shared and, but most of the ideas have been around how to do the process better and I was, and I, so I'm very open to hearing from folks if you have ideas about what we would do in the interim if we were to do the process differently. So if you think of things, please email them to us.
I think one thing is like with the listening sessions, I heard kind of quite a bit, they just felt like generic questions, and it didn't really feel like a listening session with us not being able to come in and ask the questions we wanted to ask, so.
Okay, thank you. That's good feedback. Thanks.
Absolutely.
We have another question in about a minute and ten seconds.
Less than a minute and ten seconds. Uh, thank you for sharing. You referenced that, uh, guidance, I believe, was released last week, about twelve, seven to twelve months of data collection and transparent data sharing with the community. From what you heard during the presentation earlier today, uh, and also if you have seen any of the long-range facility planning, uh, listening sessions that we had, or community sessions that we had, or data that they shared, is there anything additional that you feel you would like the board to ask the superintendent and the team that have not been shared tonight or throughout the last twelve months?
Um, I mean, not that I can think of, my biggest thing is just more transparency through the process and slowing it down and having parents more involved.
Okay, more involved, but not, not specific information that's missing?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Thank you.
It feels like, you know, the, the proposed, um, because it's not a budget, so whatever, I can't remember what it's called.
Proposal.
Huh? Proposal, yeah. So I know that's hard to predict, so I get that could be tricky, but yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Your time's up for the question period. Thank you, Crystal.
Yep, thank you. Alan Overvig.
Okay, no. Um, do I just start? Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Alan Overvig. I'm an eighth grader at Sheldon Middle School. I'm going to Crescent Valley Middle High School next year, but it still feels wrong that the school I've been at for years might not be here anymore. I know this meeting is about plans and budgets, but for us students, it's about people and memories. Sheldon isn't just a building, it's where I started to like school again after COVID. It's where teachers believed in me and where I made friends. You can't see that on a chart. If you lose a school, uh, you're not, you're not just closing classrooms, you're breaking up, you're breaking up a community. The kids who are still here will have to start over in a new place with new teachers trying to figure out where they fit. That's hard, especially for middle schoolers. It's also confusing to see adults make a big decision this fast. In school, we're told to slow down, check our work, and be fair. This doesn't feel slow or fair to the students and teachers who made these schools what they are. Even though I'm leaving for CV next year, I still care about Sheldon and the students coming after me. I want the, I want to, I want them to have the same chances I had to feel proud of their school. Please slow, please slow down and think about the, these places that mean to us. This isn't just about buildings, about, it's about students and teachers. Thank you.
Is there any questions from the board? Is there any questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job with your presentation, or your testimony. Um, as a reminder about the applauding that that will, that could potentially add to the times, I understand you're being supportive.
Keith Rivera.
This, oh, this is on, okay. My name's Keith Rivera. Um, I'm in the Letitia Carson School District. We brought up with Garfield, which is our next, is our next closest school. You want to close Letitia Carson now, not allow the displaced students to go to the school that's still walkable for many of the kids, because they do not speak Spanish and have not been involved in the dual, um, dual immersion program. And people moving into the area, the Garfield, Letitia, will still not be able to go into their, um, sorry, uh, and this map is a huge area of, area that has the Duolingo with Lincoln and, um, Garfield. So anybody moving into this community will not be able to go to their neighborhood school. This is not acceptable. This seems insane. How is this legal? How is this even a thought that this would be acceptable if you had to close one elementary school? That seems, how does that seem to be the best choice in Letitia Carson? Unfortunately, we have a huge deficit in the budget that we have to overcome. I do not envy this decision-making. I know this is a hard choice, but when it comes to budget cuts, you have to cut the excess, trim the fat. And in this case, the excess is Franklin, which is a publicly-funded school that is a lottery system, no boundary school, and by closing the school, you would not displace anybody. Those students would just go to their neighborhood school. The only thing that they would be losing is the sentimental value of their school. Next is the two dual immersion programs. By cutting these, you will have more efficient and cost-effective transportation as students wouldn't stay in their neighborhood school. Closing Letitia Carson and keeping dual immersion programs and causing a geographical and logistical nightmare. Ending the dual immersion program would also not displace any students, they would just go to their neighborhood boundary schools. This lady in the budget was talking about getting people into the community, more students will increase the budget. Our school boundaries is, is complete mess, so when people are looking to move to Corvallis, why would they want to move here when it's complete chaos in the school boundaries? By gearing up these special programs, you will serve Corvallis equally as a whole. This will be best for everyone because you will not be making exceptions, everyone will get the same education. If one school is able to teach a foreign language, then they all should. This is what a public schools are founded on, all students getting the same.
Keith, your time's up. I'm sorry. Um, we can wait and see if anybody has any questions. Is there any questions from the board? Thank you for your time, Keith.
Hello, school board members. My name is Kalen Jenkins-Rathburn and I reside in the Corvallis School District. I will try to talk very fast. Um, I am a parent of two boys, a fourth grader at Letitia Carson and a freshman at CV who went to Letitia Carson and Sheldon before that. I truly believe it is not in the best interest of the school district or the Corvallis community to choose these particular schools for consolidation. I believe I offer a unique perspective to this situation I would like to speak with you about. I went to Fair Play Elementary, Sheldon, and then to Crescent Valley. Fair Play, as you may or may not know, closed for consolidation in two thousand and two. I was the second-to-last graduating class of that school, learning my fifth grade year that the closure was imminent. I have firsthand experience of what it feels like to have your school closed and to live in a neighborhood that has lost its school. The neighborhoods surrounding Fair Play used to be lively, full of promise, and coming neighborhoods with frequent building of new homes for families of all socioeconomic standing. There was even a gas station on Highway twenty. When Fair Play closed, everything in those neighborhoods just stopped. With no neighborhood school, that area was no longer primaria for expansion and it lost its appeal to prospective families with children. It was devastating as a child to learn that my school was closing, but we were given a little bit more time to comprehend the closure and transition to what it meant for our community. This proposal does not afford the same opportunity to Letitia Carson. Instead, it effectively dooms these neighborhoods, which are currently being considered by the city for cottage clusters for low-income and single-parent families. Unfortunately, a little over twelve or twenty years later, and this proposal has asked the school board to do this again to those same neighborhoods, except now this proposal seeks to take out a middle school as well. The rationale and reasoning for closing LC and Sheldon is at best rushed with biased reasoning and at worst negligent to all of Corvallis and especially our vulnerable disadvantaged children who we should be striving to protect. Why? Specifically with data to support it, Letitia Carson. It is in the top four elementary schools for enrollment. It will put a substantial strain on an already failing bus system. It was one of the schools that received substantial updates within the fact, last five years. Perhaps most importantly, it is a Title I school that deserves, or that serves a large population of families. That fact alone should mean these children in their school deserve a more thoughtful approach to our district's financial issues. Sorry, I'm trying to skip something. To be blunt, Franklin, can you still hear me? Sounded quite awesome. To be blunt, Franklin is a publicly-funded private school for the economically advantaged and was chosen as a school to continue funding over a school that serves the underprivileged. Think of the message that sends to our children. The Corvallis School District website states that their vision is building trust, inclusivity, inclusivity, and engagement through a culturally relevant, real-world learning experience. Does this vision align with the proposal that is being provided to you? Is the relevant, real-world learning experience for the children of North Corvallis supposed to be that their voices hold less weight in our community because we are disproportionately less wealthy than the other areas?
Kalen, your time is up. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on one second. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Sammy, and I also have a question.
I do have two quick questions. They're tough, choose to answer either or none.
Okay.
I want to leave none of your experience, you've gone through that. If a school, I don't want to choose one right now, closes, how that transition can be better than Fair Play? My second question is, do you think the Early Childhood Center in your community and neighborhood will make the transition or the impact different than how it went in Fair Play?
Um, I don't, I'm not sure about the first part, but the, um, or the second part, will you repeat the first one again, because it was something I feel like I could answer?
How could the transition be better than your experience in Fair Play for any school that made it close in than your future?
Um, I, I think the main thing is not necessarily making it better than the experience, it was just a not-great experience, but it felt like we had more time than what my kids will be afforded, so I think that's a major factor.
Thank you.
That added another question. Your answer. That added another question you answered. When you, how long was that time that you found out? Was it like time when you found out then to transition? Or was it the discussion for the time that you're talking about?
Um, I remember the discussion happening a lot at the very beginning of my fifth grade year, that it was, schools were gonna close. But it was the middle of my fifth grade year that we learned that that was happening. And it wasn't until the next year, so it was like a full year and a half.
Okay, thank you. My question was, you mentioned bias in the process. Can you elaborate what you mean by bias?
Um, I think mainly the, the aspect of closing, both Shuttaland and Letitia Carson, which are in lower-income neighborhoods versus keeping the schools that are in more affluent neighborhoods untouched, specifically one that is lottery-based. And, because of the lack of buses there, that automatically puts that at more, advantaged children are able to go there. Families in different situations than a lot of ours are able to go there.
Do you think adding buses would help with that equity issue?
To Franklin?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think if Franklin stopped being a lottery school, it would help with that.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Kalen. Kim, real quick, I didn't write down what time we started.
Neither did, oh. Yes, I did. Um, it would have been, well, I didn't write it down. Our first in-person was eight twenty-seven, so the two before that would have been six, so it would have been eight twenty.
Thank you.
Ediana Kreft.
Good evening. My name is Ediana Kreft. Um, I'm a parent of a student that is in this district currently going to Letitia Carson. I'm also a staff member in the Corvallis School District. Um, I do just want to echo to shorten kind of things and give people more time that I appreciate more of the information that was presented, um, from Ryan Nos and his team. Um, I felt like some of that information would have been nice to have a little bit sooner because it addressed a lot of the questions and concerns that I did have originally. So, thank you for that. Um, that kind of helped me to just cross out some things I didn't need to address. I'd also like to just echo, um, what Susannah, Shun, Melissa, Krista, Alan, Keith, and Kalen have said. They've also captured a lot of the feelings and sentiments that I have. Um, I just want to kind of reiterate a core belief that's listed on the district website. And I'll quote, "We must actively work to address inequities that persist in our educational system, including fostering inclusive and equitable access," end quote. I don't believe that the closure of Letitia Carson would align with these core beliefs and values. As many have said before, it's a Title I school that serves a diverse population of students and their families. The announcement to decision-making timeline, I feel like, has not allowed for an informed response from families, staff, and other people in the community to address just how severe the negative impacts are and what those negative impacts might be that the closure would have on those students, families, staff, and the community as a whole. Um, so that's all I want to say for that, so thank you.
Thank you, Ediana. Um, is there any questions from the board? Go ahead, Shauna.
Thank you so much for your comments. And my question is, in talking about not, not significant time to allow for really sufficient and effective feedback, do you have a recommendation for what would feel more supportive in terms of a timeline?
Um, being a parent and a staff, it's kind of, it's twofold. Um, just because I know that as a parent, I want to be able to mentally and emotionally prepare my child for a decision. But also as a staff member, um, and being part of, you know, groups and unions, I understand the need as well from a staff standpoint, especially me as a newer staff, how cuts every year and closures of schools affects realistically even my possibility of having a job next year. So, timeline for me is really important and I understand wanting to be able to prepare for that. But I feel like my ability to make an informed decision either way helps by having more time and I don't realistically think that like a week of kind of getting a notice of a potential closure and then jumping into a decision is sufficient. I really do think it takes time, and time meaning potential months, for people to be able to gather the inform, well, access the information, right? Be able to process that information and then be able to, in light of all of that, be able to make informed decisions or give suggestions or feedback for potential other options.
Teresa.
Um, thank you for your comments and I'm curious about your perspective as a staff person and as a parent, but particularly as a staff person. So, with more time, um, so, and I asked this question earlier to another person, so with more time, um, that would mean that we'd be looking at not having a closure, uh, in twenty-six, twenty-seven. And so, what are your thoughts about the potential impact that not closing a school for the upcoming year might have on our district? And do you have thoughts about what we might do about that?
Yeah, and that is something that I weigh because again, we want to have a job. We need to be able to support our families and have income coming in. And listening to, you know, Ryan Nos and the team about, you know, we don't highly recommend that because this looks like we're gonna be looking at even more cuts than what we had before. And as a staff member, I don't like hearing that because I don't want to be cut. I don't want my fellow, you know, coworkers or anyone in the district to be cut. But at the same time, for me personally speaking, if cuts have to happen, I would at least be confident in knowing that that decision was made with the most time and effort and thought that went into that. Um, and again, me personally, I would just be willing to kind of absorb a little bit more of that risk just because I know I'm already at risk of not having a job next year. So, that's always something that's in the back of my mind of, I'm having to prepare either way because of seniority and everything else. So, um, I understand the ramifications of waiting and what that would mean. But me personally, I would at least be more confident in knowing, okay, there's more cuts and that happened, but I know that we made the best decision that we could possibly make.
Thank you.
I turned it off, your time's up. Um, thank you for, um, Ariana.
Rebecca Goslow.
The one with the person. There you go. Now it's on.
Thank you. Well, a tough place to be. A teacher of thirty-one years, a senior teacher at that. Decision, and first of all, I live three blocks from Letitia Carson and my children went there. They're now forty and forty-one, and now my granddaughter goes there. Decision was made in a week to close Letitia Carson, a Title I school of thirty-three, three hundred and thirty-three thriving students. A walking school, a school with hard-working parents for low income. Letitia Carson has been singled out. In an upcoming OSBA conference where Corvallis 509J will be the keynote speakers, bridge for student success, U-State Community Engagement Transparency, Shared Decision-Making, and a Comprehensive Long-Range Facility Revisit, all of this is not true, or it does not feel true to the citizens of this community. And I'm speaking as a community member, not as a parent. Two hundred parents at the last meeting were sho- showed up to hear the school closure for the first time. It wasn't like, as a community member, I went to all four. It's the first time. And tonight, you only told us about four schools. It did not include Letitia Carson. You speak of long-term planning, yet you have known and watched for the last five years and, and you had Betsy Coleman was built with over half of our bond living money, which I voted for. Schools were remodeled. If you knew all this, and you did, why would you build a school to the magnitude of Betsy Coleman and remodel all the schools to such an extent? I've heard from parents of this community and their excellent recommendations, not just one as presented by this board, but, excuse me, um, several options, closing a thriving school. For example, close Franklin, move to Catherine Harrison. The life skills class currently at Catherine Harrison can be moved to Letitia Carson. And I went there today and I looked at, they used to have their cafeteria, uh, lunch in the cafeteria. Now they've built a new cafeteria which would accommodate the, the life skills from Catherine Harrison. In addition, the teachers at Catherine Harrison could go to Garfield and Lincoln and you could offer not only Spanish speaking, but one class at each grade level, absorbing those teachers without losing their jobs. The district told, the district told me it would cost money to revamp a life skills class. There's fifty million in the contingent fund, a solution. Sell the land that Franklin sits on for housing. It's close to OSU. Take the funds and the contingent, put it in the contingent fund. It can cover the minimal cost to revamp the life skills classroom versus dismanning three hundred and thirty-three students.
Is there any questions from the board? Go ahead, Chris.
You mentioned the fifty million contingency fund. Where is that at?
On your website.
But it states that we have fifty million contingency?
There's a site of fifty million. So, my question is, you've got a conti- how much do you have in your contingency fund?
We cannot engage in conversation with you.
So, there's money. Interestingly enough, in talking to your district, some of your numbers aren't correct on your own website. So, there are solutions. There's a lot of other solutions besides closing Letitia Carson.
Alright, thank you.
I have a question for you. Um, where did you see information that there's people giving a keynote at a conference?
Where? It was provided to me by, um, one of my neighbors who, um, and then I went online and I looked to see who was gonna be the keynote speakers. And so I was curious because this is all very oddly timely, the recognition of a school district doing all these wonderful things. And so I thought, okay, fine, I'm gonna check and see. So I went online and to see where the conference one was located. And it turned out, three of these three are, from this district, are the guest speaker, are the keynote speakers.
I need to provide a point of clarification, which was within, um, within meeting norms. That is inaccurate. It's a conference session, just so you know, there's a huge difference between a keynote-
Perhaps so, but there are three keynote speakers speaking on. This is a quote right from the conference.
I cannot engage in conversation. I did need to provide a point of clarification. That folk can look on the OSBA website for that information about a session, not a keynote. And, um, I do need you to state your name for the record.
Rebecca Goslow.
Thank you so much, Rebecca, for your time. Yes, um, we are over our thirty minutes allocation at this time. Thank you, Judith, for reminding me of that. And, um, I, how many more comment cards are there? Cause we're supposed to pause before that last one. We have twenty-seven. Before we decide how much time we can allocate for public comment this evening, I want to remind everybody that public comment is only one opportunity to engage with the board. As you can see, it's more difficult to engage in conversation with you. There are several ways you can do that. You can call us, you can set up meetings, small groups. No more than three board members can engage in small group conversations. However, you can email us, call us, set up time to meet with us individually to have a conversation. And sometimes that is a little bit more in-depth. So I just want to let you know that. And if you do not get your name called, it's not because we do not want to hear from you, okay? I just want to make sure that that's clear. And, um, so I would like to ask the board how much time you would like to extend this evening.
Chair, may I request board consensus to extend it until nine-thirty, so effectively thirty minutes?
Yes, and that'll be actually forty minutes beyond what was allocated on the agenda, just so people know. Cause we're already ten minutes over the public meeting, or public comment period. So, does that sound okay if we extend another thirty minutes and see where we get with y'all? Okay, thanks. Kim, can you resume?
Will Rotten-Colber.
My name is Will Rotten-Colber and I live within the boundary of the school district. I have three children, two of them participate at Letitia Carson, and I have a future wildcat that's twenty-two months old. I'm a small business owner in this community. I've been here and I am a product of Shuttaland and Crescent Valley High School, class of twenty twenty-five, twenty-two thousand and five. It's been a while. We had our twenty-year reunion, Jesus Christ. This is all pretty scuffed, isn't it? It's pretty scuffed. It's a big, hot mess. And I, uh, went to the listening session at Letitia Carson and every night after I put my kids to bed, I've watched the last three school board meetings with all the comments to understand what's going on. As a small business owner, I'm concerned that the actions of this board are gonna affect my business. This is affecting the economy, what you're doing here, people moving here, people leaving here. Okay? This is more than, uh, teachers and students. This is our, the fabric of our society. So this is not an easy decision. I have been asked personally by Sammy, and I know that the board has requested that the community participate in this process. I am here. Okay, so what are we gonna do? As Becky Goslow, a respected member of our community, said, "We have reserves." I suggest that you use those reserves to not lay off any staff for a year. Take the time to cool off the tone, to make a comprehensive restructuring of this district from top to bottom, from student to school board and everyone in between. I work in the construction industry. I use words at work that you can't use here. I understand that. But I will also say this, we get paid to produce. We build things. We don't talk, talk, talk. We build. If we don't build, we don't get paid. Does that make sense? And if an employee or a contractor shows up on the job and complains about how hard their job is, they get fired. I hear a lot of complaining about the hassle of this or how hard the work is. Every meeting that I've listened to, it's so hard. You're here to do the work. You asked for these positions. And if you don't want to do the work, resign. Take the time, use the reserves, cool the room, get a plan, and restructure this district. Not close one school, not close two. The budget says you need to close four to five to make this district solvent. The, this community's gonna get behind you if you actually do the work.
Will, your time is up. Is there any questions from the board?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, Will.
Erica Wood. Oops.
Hello, my name is Erica Wood and I reside within the district boundaries in northeast Corvallis. When I was a student in the district, I attended Letitia Carson Elementary, Shuttaland Middle School, and Crescent Valley High School. I graduated from Stanford University last June. I'm here to speak about the disproportionate impact of closing Letitia Carson and Shuttaland on northeast Corvallis. Per page ten of the revised proposal, approximately thirty-two percent of students currently attending Letitia Carson would move to Mountain View. Earlier, on page five, this is specified as students living east of Highway ninety-nine and students that transferred to Letitia Carson from Mountain View. Students living east of Highway ninety-nine are facing the loss of two neighborhood schools. They will no longer be able to bike or walk to elementary or middle school. Mountain View, since it is along Highway ninety-nine, is only accessible by car or bus. Additionally, since Mountain View will be a K-through-eight, these students will be forced into the K-through-eight model along with Mountain View Boundary students. The district, on page twenty, October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five consolidation FAQs, notes that it needs to evaluate interest in moving a K-through-eight program to Mountain View. The district, as far as I can tell from publicly available sources, has not surveyed parents to understand whether or not they want that program. An estimated four hundred and twenty kids will now be enrolled in a program that the district has minimal evidence that families want. They have only stated that based on the interest in Franklin K-through-eight, they are providing a second option for families interested in the K-through-eight model. Page twenty twenty, page twenty-two of the same consolidation FAQs. The difference between Mountain View's model and Franklin Franklin's model is that Mountain View K-through-eight won't be an option for families. It will be forced. Now, another community, a community which used to be able to walk to middle school and potentially elementary school, a community which is the subset of one that experiences poverty at the highest rates in the district, will be added to the facade of this district's new K-through-eight option. This proposal is a disgrace, treating northeast Corvallis as the sacrificial lamb to hold up the rest of the district. In a couple weeks, district representatives are set to speak about closing schools, not communities. Do only communities on the wealthier side of Corvallis count?
I turned it off my pad. Any questions from the board? I have a question. Do you think that the, um, plans to provide more options for bikability all the way to Adair would help with some of the points that you raised?
I am unaware of those plans, but it is miles along a busy road. We have been promised in northeast Corvallis bikable paths to Albany in the past and it never materializes. So I think there's minimal trust in northeast Corvallis that bikability will ever actually happen.
Okay, I was just wondering. Thank you for answering that. Any other questions? Sammy?
Erica, thank you again. Really appreciate your insights. I want to lean on your expertise, both academically and lived experience. Anything you feel the board need to ask to have better informed, data-driven, community-driven decisions that we have not heard yet?
I think that the district need, the, the district already surveys families several times throughout the year, from my experience. That there's lots of newsletters that go out to families. Um, those need to be a two-way communication street more often and that needs to ask families, what do they want for their students? Do, would they be interested in new models? And beyond that, there's been a lot of concerns about the rigor in the district. Ask families what they want in terms of that. Ask people that have less, left the district if they would return under, and under what conditions. I think that's how you also begin to rebuild trust within the district.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Erica, for your time.
Nicole Hoffman?
Thank you, Nicole. Uh, for folk who couldn't hear because the mic wasn't on over there, Nicole chose to email, um, comments to allow time for, um, the next speakers.
Amanda Nalik?
Good evening. My name is Amanda Nalik and I'm a parent to two children at Letitia Carson. Tonight, I urge you to pause this rushed consolidation process and commit to, instead to a long-term district-wide plan that reflects the values of this community. When I read CSD's revised proposal, released just eight days ago, I was blindsided to see our neighborhood school named for closure. Letitia Carson is more than a school for northeast Corvallis. It's the heart of our neighborhood. It's where families from every background come together and where equity isn't just a word in a mission statement. It's something our kids live every day. Closing Letitia Carson would dismantle one of the most inclusive, community-centered schools in our city. As a research scientist, I rely on data. It's clear that this proposal is not grounded in evidence. It's a knee-jerk reaction to the challenges of declining enrollment, rising costs and tightening budgets. While difficult decisions may lie ahead, this plan doesn't fix the next year's budget shortfall or the eleven million dollar deficit projected by twenty-twenty-seven. Instead, it creates disruption without solving the underlying problem. Just two months ago, the district's own long-range facilities planning committee recommended a district-wide review of the school boundaries to balance enrollment and to ensure equitable access to resources. They made no recommendation to close schools, yet CSD is moving forward without a boundary review or detailed justifications. This contradicts both the committee's guidance and the Oregon PTA's recommendation for process, transparency and fairness. This is not how trust is built. This is how it's broken. Many of us are losing confidence in our superintendent and we do not want to lose trust, trust in this board's commitment to transparency, equity and meaningful community partnership. And the facts don't support this proposal. Northeast Corvallis is growing, not shrinking. The city has approved new housing in the Letitia Carson Boundary and is planning more. Closing the only neighborhood school serving this area isn't strategic, it's short-sighted. Meanwhile, hosting over five hundred students at Besse Coleman when its capacity is only four hundred and sixty-one simply doesn't add up. And with the district already spending six point four million dollars a year on transportation, adding longer routes and more riders to buses will only increase costs and strain a system that is already unreliable. This decision will shape Corvallis for decades. So I'm asking you, as elected representatives of the community, vote no on this proposal. Use reserves to give the district time to work with families, educators and city planners on a long-term district, district-wide plan. Our children deserve schools built on transparency and inclusion. Please do the right thing, pause this process, rebuild public trust and put our kids first. Thank you.
Thanks Amanda. Any questions from the board? I have one question, um, I have a question for you. What, um, what would transparency look like to you?
Well, for one, I felt like the listening sessions were very, uh, narrow-minded. The questions were leading or they weren't really open questions. Um, when you have three questions to answer and one of them is, do you have any questions, but there's no response, I find that to be not a conversation. That's a one-way. It's like spilling things into a void. And I, I do think we need to have a third party. Show us, show us the numbers, show us the data, show us that this is actually a viable plan. Or show us what a viable plan would look like. Give us options. It's, it seems like we have, this is a plan that has been put, a decision it feels like, that has been put on our table, not something that has been asked, is this going to work for the community?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Evan Bretowig?
Good evening. My name is Evan Bretowig and I'm a resident within the district. Um, I acu- I want to echo a lot of what Amanda said, um, and I just want to say that equity is hard, especially in rough times. It needs time. It needs hearing out messy and sometimes disjointed perspectives. It can require outside moderation at times. But student success needs to be at the center of our decisions. There's systemic issues within Corvallis School Districts. There's budget shortfalls, which is not a, a problem that has been created by ourselves. There's, but there's frustrations with the curriculum. There is declining enrollment. The current proposal does not solve the budget situation and at the, or the core issues of the district. It flies in the face of the core mission of the district for equality. Proposals and actions that do not recognize systemic issues perpetuate them. We need a comprehensive plan, a path forward, not into a corner. We need an audit of the district from every level. We need thoughtful redistricting across the entire community to consolidate into schools that are the best suited to support our students. We need to create a plan that is going to excite and support students into the future for years to come. Yes, those take time. But they are hard and that doesn't mean that they are any less necessary. The best time for action was yesterday and the second best time is today. If there are funds available from a rainy day fund that can be used to, to extend and give this time for this discussion, use them. If there are administrative rules that limit the use of these funds for this purpose, change them. Do not support a proposal that sacrifices the mission of this district. We are living in a frightening time, uncertain what the next few years will bring. Don't let this district, district be another example of sacrificing its values. Reject this Band-Aid fix and start building a new plan today. One that can truly address the systemic issues and supports the whole community and stands on the mission of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Is there any questions from the board? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Heather Lauterback?
Hi, my name is Heather Lauterback. I am a Corvallis School District resident, a mother of two and the PTA president of Letitia Carson Elementary. Additionally, I volunteer my time and spend it with school-aged children across the district. Tonight, I'd like to share my concerns about the current school consolidation proposal. While my family and community will be directly impacted, I speak to you as a committed advocate for all Corvallis children. I understand the painfully painful reality. Consolidation must happen to address our budget deficit and declining enrollment. This is no small task and I recognize the weight of the decisions you face. With the initial plan proposed, closing Sheldon, uh, I was cautiously optimistic, hopeful about the possibility of K through eight addition and a K through six model. But I now realize I was naive. The revised proposal felt like a wake-up call and an action, uh, wake-up call to action and scrutiny. The revised plan is short-sighted and does not solve the immediate or long-term budget challenges. More troubling is the impact on equity. Closing Letitia Carson disproportionately affects low-income families, the school with the highest population in our district. Pro- prioritizing its closure raises serious questions about the values of inclusion and equity that our district claims to uphold. On October eighteenth, the Oregon PTA released its school consolidation guidance, advisory guidance. This wasn't available during the original planning process, but it is exactly what we need to create a new plan. As a mother and mentor, I believe it's important to show our children that sometimes we don't have all the right answers at first. And it's okay to pause, reflect and try again. What a beautiful opportunity we have to use new tools, allow more time to do this. I urge you to do just that. Take a step back, study and apply the guidance of the Oregon PTA that they provide. Show our children what leadership looks like when it's thoughtful, transparent and courageous. Please reject this proposal. Allow more time to develop a plan by using rainy day funds to truly address the long-term budget deficit. Again, because consolidation is necessary. One that is going to be equitable, inclusive and transparent. Part of this transparency would be a side-by-side cost comparison of each building, not just capacity. This is an immense responsibility. Let's not place the result of a short-sighted planning on our children.
Sorry. Is there any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Jessie Beasley?
Oh, just really quick, I'm sorry. I looked on the wrong note. I called you somebody else's name, Heather, my bad. Thank you for your time, Heather.
Okay, I'm Jessie Beasley. I live in the district. Um, I cut a lot of this out. Closing schools can be part of the solution, but what steps have been made to ensure efficiencies before closures? What happens next year when we have another budget for shortfall? The work and data that was collected by the long-range facilities planning committee was largely ignored. Their recommendations did not include any school closures, but suggested three things. Engage with the community, continue to work with Corvallis, um, school to collaborate on housing and community growth. And three, review intra-district boundaries. Um, we were given a lot of information tonight, but none of it was actually at the rigor I would expect to see from such a big decision. I would, I would like to see so much, like a big deep dive into this. Um, some key factors from the Oregon PTA's guidelines that are missing in this process are a timeline of seven to twelve months. If we want to include the data that we got from the, um, long-term facilities planning, that's fine, but I would expect them to also take credence into those three suggestions, namely the boundary, um, re- reboundring. Two, engage the community in developing a variety of options, which should include at least one alternative to fully closing schools. Community engagement should be early and proactive while options are still on the table. We need a variety of options, not just one option from one small group of people. The feedback sessions have been late in the process and restricted by predetermined questions. No one ever asked us our ideas and solutions. We are a highly educated city. Use your greatest resource, your community. And three, appoint a community advisory committee to lead the school closure discussion that is representative of the whole community. There's need, there needs to be a task force created, just like the one, um, in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, to propose the new boundaries. Please gain back some trust from this community and course correct. Give this impactful decision the due process and transparent analysis it deserves.
That's Jessie. Is there any questions from the board? I have a question for you, Jessie. Um, for doing the deep dive into, um, information and data, I like looking at a bunch of numbers and data too. Sometimes that gets really overwhelming for a lot of people. How would, how do you suggest we balance getting the information out so it meets the needs of folk that like a lot of information? And also folk who aren't familiar with reading, um, some of that materials?
Um, just flood it, because the people that like the data will eat it up and the people that don't will just let it be. Yeah, I, I thrive on the data and without it, it just feels like the rushed decision. And I think that's, like, the information we got tonight was nice. Um, it did kind of change what my talking points were because I didn't have it available before and there is no more public comment after this. Um, it would just be emailing the board, correct?
We do have public comment at our next meeting as well on the thirteenth, just so you, so you know, sorry, I needed to do another point of clarification. I should have said that before I said that. Because that is, that was also incorrect, there was no more. Um, what would, what kind of data is missing?
Um, I would like that, um, side-by-side cost comparison for each school. And considering a re-boundry change. I think you're getting a lot of people tonight from one subset of the city because it affects them the most. If you did propose a boundary change, I think you would get a lot more involvement. And I don't think that's a bad thing.
Okay, thank you. Oh, you have a question, Chris?
So, with a boundary change, how would that affect dealing with the shortfall of money?
Um, I don't have a specific answer, but that was the suggestion by the long-range facility team. So, if you're, if you're going to use their data, I would also suggest you listen to their suggestions as well. At least look at it, put it as an option and see what it does for the budget.
Thank you.
Actually, can I do a follow-up before you leave? You still have thirty seconds left. Um, the boundary shift kind of follows that part, right? Is, do you think that, you mean a bigger boundary adjustment than what was in the proposal? Is that what you mean?
So like the information I, I saw tonight, it, it was, it was saying like, this school couldn't hold this capacity or this one, this, and the whispers in the audience were like, will you just re-boundry, you know?
Yeah.
That's, that would make it possible and, and yeah.
Your time's up. Thank you, Jessie. We have five minutes left.
Caitlin Eaton?
I don't know. What number are you?
Um, Caitlin, can you sit at the next chair over and use the, the other mic?
Yes. Thank you. Hello, I am Caitlin Eaton. I am a parent of a first grader at Letitia Carson and I'm going to try not to get emotional because, woo, got a lot of statements going on today. Um, I did want to echo that I agree with many people's statements that have already been made. And also I appreciate as well, I want to echo that some of the data that was included tonight, again, would have been very nice to have in that published proposal. I do want to also note that as a data analyst, I shouldn't have had to go in and find this public data and review it myself. I'm sure most of you, ma- maybe not most of you, I'm not sure who has read my email. But within six hours of seeing this proposal, I was able to actually create an analysis based on some of the public data that was available. And that's just looking at what is on the school district's page. Uh, I do want to especially point out one thing that I haven't heard yet. And that is that the decision-making framework And that is that the decision-making framework for choosing Letitia Carson really comes into question for me when you look at how it's done over year-over-year analysis. So Letitia Carson is the only school that saw a 22% year-over-year increase in students meeting grade level science expectations in 2024. This is not a school in decline, it is a school demonstrating measurable academic growth when decreasing math and science scores are consistently a pain point for all other schools in the district. Additionally, of all of the schools in the district, Letitia Carson has had the most stable enrollment over the last decade and some of the longest standing employment of teachers. That's just fact-based, we've got very clear documentation on that. The other thing that I wanted to point out, since I don't need to read my entire statement, is we've been asked a few times by the board so far about what transparency might be better, right? One of the things that I really found concerning is that the only mention of projected enrollment increase since September 9th, or excuse me, September 11th, was a footnote on this diagram. Where's the projected enrollment numbers? Why aren't we seeing those changes? Also, I note that in the frequently asked questions.
Caitlin, your time's up. It was just about the flip.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I didn't see the yellow light, thank you.
Yeah. Is there any questions from anybody on the board? I keep saying that, but student reps can ask questions too. I hope you know that, I'm sorry, I didn't point that out earlier. I know. Okay, thank you for your time, Caitlin.
Chair. So I recognize that our time is up and I recognize as a board, we cannot pick and choose who's next to speak. And I recognize that it is up to those who ask to speak, they can pass on. If we extend the time for six minutes and if they choose to pass on for students who are staying until 9:30 to speak, I would love to hear from them. We cannot control that. So if community members would like to pass on, I would like to add extra 10 minutes with the, with the hopes that we let our students speak.
Emphatic second.
That's fine. However, we cannot determine whether or not somebody will skip, so we will have to go in order. So we, we have to be mindful if we keep extending, hoping that somebody will pass.
Correct.
That is also a thing, so we have to wait until, who, what number are we on? 17?
So we'll have to say each name.
We'll have to say each name. And if you would like to speak, we have 10 minutes. We don't want to silence anybody either. Also, I heard that there was a statement from the last speaker, you can email that to us as well if you'd like, so. If we're gonna, are you all okay extending 10 more minutes? Okay, and then that may be it though, so.
So Michael Eller.
I'm actually gonna pause and let my daughter go, I believe she's next. Amity Eller?
No.
Turned in the cards at the same time, so.
I know, but then she changed her mind, she wanted to speak with two other students, so they all had to enter their cards and it was further down the line. I, I mean, so, I, I. I mean, if.
If the board will allow that.
And if she's willing to speak without her friends until it's their turn? I mean, I, I'm struggling with this one.
I, it's, I'm gonna say this very clearly and bluntly, it's up to the adults in the room if you want to pass and let the kids talk, basically. So that's up to you all as public commenters that have put your names in. If you read names and people want to skip and see if we have time after for you to go, so that's, that's basically, I'm just gonna say it really clearly for folk, that way instead of dancing around it, that's what the, that's what the suggestion is, but it's up to you all if you want to skip.
Okay. So the next name is Toni Kadina.
All right. I'm gonna speak and I'm gonna speak for only a minute. Thank you.
You need to, yeah, move over to the next one, thank you.
Okay, I'll take 10 seconds of my time, please don't count this against me, but the Benton County pathway you're talking about does not go all the way to Adair Village, it doesn't even go to Mountain View. It's gonna stop at the lower end of northeast Elliott Circle. I am the Ward 9 Counselor for the City of Corvallis. Thank you, I know you're facing a very difficult situation. I just want to say as I listen to this, I appreciate the concern, but I think when you define a problem a certain way and constrain your, put in constraints, you're gonna back into the solution that you've come up with. So the factors that are in your decision criteria are not considered, why? Because you're not willing to remove those constraints. So forget equity, forget where is new development occurring? Forget transportation, you're backed into where you are. So to cut to the chase, you haven't really adhered to your decision factors. This is a rushed process. You've heard about disproportionate impact. Transporting students three miles away doesn't fit with city and state work promoting safe routes to schools. I think there really needs to be, this problem is not even gonna solve your problem for long term. I, I think what you need to do is take a pause, use the reserve to cover your gap for the year, get to a position where you actually look at a district operations restructuring plan that is sustainable for the long term. Part of your goal in that restructuring work should be to replenish the rainy day fund. If it's not raining now, I don't know what you call it. So I'm gonna leave it at that and just say it's often necessary to go slow to go fast. Plan for success by planning well and create that space. And I'm sorry to the kids.
Thank you, Toni. And to do a point of clarification on myself, that, that pathway does not go, to restate what you said, to Adair, as I was misinformed, so I would like to correct myself because I don't mind doing that.
Emily Norcross?
I will pass.
Okay. So next, Odin?
Okay. So my name is Odin and I'm a fourth grader at Letitia Carson. I like being a student at Letitia Carson because my teachers help us when we need it and they help us work on skills we haven't mastered yet and even on things we think we're already good at. My school feels special because it's one of the only schools named after a black pioneer in Oregon. We learn about Letitia Carson almost every day in fourth grade. We even get to visit her land. When I was there last week, I learned that her cabin was only about 10 by 20 feet and she had over like, she had about three children and a husband. And that's not that much room. So then what happened? I went there last week, I learned that her, um, yeah, I already said that, um, but, and they found a rust in the shape of a scythe she used for cutting hay and also medical weeds. It was like two feet under the ground, it wasn't even a scythe, it was just dust. And then what happened? She worked hard and helped to build Oregon, but a lot of people tried to erase her story. They stole her land and her things. They also burned her house down and even though she went to court asking for about $7,000, she only got like $2,000, I mean, 2,300. I think it's not fair that if her school gets closed, it would feel like people are trying to erase her again and that's not fair. If my school closed, it would change a lot of people's lives. Some kids would have to move or take long bus rides and that's really hard. My, um, I moved here from Minnesota and long bus rides were tough for kids there too. My bus now only has about 12 kids. Maybe bus yards could be combined instead of closing schools. Also, we could save money in smaller ways like making the fifth grade camping trip instead of a whole week, like three days, instead of cutting a whole school. I don't want to move again because I just made new friends, I found teachers I like and my mom promised I wouldn't have to switch schools again until middle school. Please don't close Letitia Carson, she did, she deserves to be remembered and so do the kids and families who are part of our story. Also, um, wait, I forgot what I was gonna say.
You only have 30 seconds left too, I just want to let you know that. You're doing awesome.
What was I gonna say? I forgot. Okay, um, questions?
Is there any questions from the board? Go ahead, Juta.
Are there things that are special to you about Letitia Carson that are different than what was special about your elementary school in Minnesota?
Um, the things that are different is that like, um, it's a lot easier to make friends here because like back in Minnesota, there are a lot of like rude kids. At my brother's old school, um, what happened? A kid like stabbed him three times with a pencil and then he had to switch schools. But then at like here, he's doing really well and so am I. So that's basically all.
Sammy?
Odin, I have a question for you, we both have something similar. I had to switch schools multiple times when I was a kid. And I wonder if you have any advice for kids who may have to switch schools? What advice would you give them to adjust to the new school?
If people had to switch to new schools, the advice I would give them would be like, don't overthink it. Like, most people are like, oh my god, there's this super cool person that I want to be friends with, but then they overthink it. Like, they overthink everything, like, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Heather.
Heather Rankin?
I emailed.
Okay.
Yes, as I always mentioned, you can email us.
Sarah Art Howard.
Oh, I'll definitely email you.
Okay. So now we have, oh, Amanda Pass, okay, so we are at Amity Eller.
Hi, my name is Amity Eller and I attend Letitia Carson Elementary. I'm a fifth grader here. But before I say anything, I just want to say that it's so ironic how you guys are thinking of taking away our school, just like how Greenberry Smith is, took away Letitia Carson's land from her unjustly. And that's all I have for you, thank you.
Is there any questions from the board? Go ahead, Shawna.
I'll just ask a quick one, what's one of your favorite things about your school?
That we're such a great community and everybody here gets along so well and it's like we're a big family.
Any other questions? Thanks, Amity.
Juniper? Juniper?
Hello, my name is Juniper Spalding. I came here today to talk about the impact of closing our school and what it will do. To start, some people will get laid off and if you don't have money, you can't buy food or pay bills or taxes. Second, kids will get separated just like me and my friends and it will be harder to stay in contact. And last, we are a Title I school, so it will be harder for kids to get to and from school. This is all and thank you for your time.
Oh, is there any questions from the board? I was seeing if there was any questions. Thank you for your time.
Addison?
It's this one right here with the red light on, there you go.
My name is Addison Greiner and I want to tell you the importance of keeping Letitia Carson open. First, Letitia Carson is very important to many people. Taking it away would have a long-lasting effect on a lot of people and find it hard to learn when they're really sad and being uncomfortable moving to a new school because like, it feels different and you get like, sometimes you're bullied when you're the new kid and it's really uncomfortable and not fun. And a lot of adults who like would go to like work there for a long time, they feel like different working at a new school because they feel like more like used to the old school. And we'll fight for our school, to keep our school open, just like Letitia Carson fought for her land, yay.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Addison, for your time.
That was the last student I have.
Okay, thank you for your time, we went over the extended, extended time that we have allocated for this. And we're gonna close public comment for the evening. If you were not able to speak, please reach out to us, we would love to hear from you. And we also, as I mentioned earlier, we have public comment at our next meeting as well. So this is not the last time you can provide public comment on this topic or anything else you want to talk to us about at meetings as well, if there's other things you would like to share with us. Okay. Sue. Oh, we can't, we can't have conversations because we're in a public meeting, I'm so sorry. We have another, we have two more agenda items and so does the board need a short break to transition to our next agenda item on Division 22 standards, which is a really hard shift from public comment into. So we're gonna take a short break again, thank you very much for everybody's time.
Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the Division 22 report for submission to ODE and to be published on the district website, and authorize the district to include up to thirty hours of professional development time, up to thirty hours of parent-teacher conferences, and up to sixty hours of recess for students in grades kindergarten through grade three for calculation of instructional hours.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Sammy and seconded by Chris. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing no further discussion. It has been moved by Sammy and seconded by Chris to approve the Division 22 report for submission to ODE and to be published on the district website, and authorize the district to include up to thirty hours of professional development time, up to thirty hours for parent-teacher conferences, and up to sixty hours of recess for students in grades kindergarten through grade three for calculation of instructional hours. Sorry, that was really long. Um, Sammy?
Aye.
Judah?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Shawna?
Aye.
Therese?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
And I vote yes, so motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is adjournment, but we also said we would come back to, um, see if the board would like to, um, continue deliberation about the consolidation proposal. So I just wanted to check in with the board.
Chair, um, I would, at this point, prefer to schedule another meeting to go over this. I think that I personally, um, would be running out of productive thinking time at this point.
How do other board members feel?
I agree.
Agree.
I agree.
I agree as well.
I do have a question for staff. Um, I, I actually prefer we continue to talk. That's just me personally, though, as one, um, board member, because the momentum has started on the conversation, and I know it's late. However, I'm also factoring in the limited amount of time to schedule another meeting. Public notice, we would have technically the time. I do not know, um, if we can make a call right now at the meeting without Kim figuring out like the schedule part of it, if we can feasibly meet.
Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanna clarify that I think we need another meeting, and I also think we should keep talking. But I don't think we're gonna talk our way to tonight to a place where we don't need to have another meeting.
Chair, maybe if I can align, uh, the sentiments of both, I'm in favor of a meeting, and, um, maybe we need to workshop it today as well, whether it's Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, where, uh, the board can attend. And in the spirit of my colleagues' comments, if we can limit our deliberation into questions or information that we are really missing before we have clarity, what's the next step, uh, maybe that would be really good. Um, uh, first step, and then, do we know what's the next step? And then maybe we adjourn to a full meeting where we can have further discussion. But I would like to prioritize questions that we may have for Ryan.
Okay, um, I just wanted to let folk know, just for transparency as chair, that I will not be available next week beyond Monday due to pre-existing work obligations since, um, that an extra meeting was not on our schedule. And so I wanna let you know, if you have a meeting next week, I will not probably be able to participate unless it is on Monday. And if there's other board members that are not available that evening as well, then we would potentially have less board members available. And I also, um, don't feel confident in making a call about having a meeting on Monday night without talking to staff. Um, and so that's where, I don't even know if it's feasible, because I don't know what is on their agendas. Are there personal lives or professional lives that may be scheduled as well? Sue?
Do we, is there some guidance around whether that's feasible from the district side? I, I think, I mean, Lou's right, we have no idea on your end if that's, if this is attainable.
I think, um, better understanding the purpose of the meeting would be helpful, because that would allow me to figure out which staff, um, I would need to have present.
And how much data is that you're looking for? I'm, I'm worried that it is Thursday night, and if you want us to have something prepared for Monday.
I don't know what you all want to do at this point. So I feel like half of you all want to adjourn, and half of you all want to talk and have an extra meeting. And so I'm not sure where, how we should proceed at this moment. So I'm gonna go around one more time. Bernie?
I can talk more, and I would like a second meeting.
Therese?
Same.
Shawna?
Same.
Chris?
Same.
Judah?
I would prefer just to go to a second meeting and have the opportunity for the public to also come back for that, since we had a lot of people, I think, confused about bringing this back and then leave.
Sammy?
Talk today and second meeting after we understand the scope of the next meeting.
Okay, so let's continue our conversation, and, um, we had a lot of public comment, and also we had a lot of questions. Maybe some of those were answered during the ti- this time, or maybe we still have questions. So, um, Bernie, I wanna prioritize your voice since, um, you only asked one question during the last round, so I would like to return to you, if you're okay with that.
Ryan, uh, we heard a request today, and, and I actually wanted to see that, too. Have you done, uh, actual cost analysis of, uh, closing each school? How much that would save?
We have looked at a couple of buildings in order to be able to come up with the, the figures of about approximately a million, approximately two million for middle school. That's, we have not done every thorough, every building, um, unless Lauren has done that. I sent her home because, um, she needed to be able to released. Um, so I would have to find that, get that information back to you.
Uh, follow up real quick, too. Um, the, the other thing is, um, the, the actual cost that you're looking at when you talk about savings. I- is it all-inclusive, including FTE, or, or i- it's just the cost of operating the facility?
It's both. It's because, um, in those numbers, as an example, um, we included a, a principal, because we would have one less principal, we would have one less office manager. So those, um, employee costs are also calculated into that figure.
Okay, so the additional seven FTE and the, the revised plan is basically the, the staff?
The staff that are funded through general fund, because that one, we compare, compare apples to apples.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Judah, you only had a comment last time. Do you have any questions that have come up since?
I, I will email the team.
Okay.
If I do have questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, other board members that have questions? I have questions. Sammy, you have questions, too?
I have questions, but we can start. You wanna start?
Sure, I'll start. Um, I have to get my notes back up, though. Okay, here we go. Um, I had a question we didn't get to at all, which I really was curious about, because the, um, a lot of comment has come in about walkability and bikeability, um, to Letitia Carson. Do you have an estimate of the percentage of students who ride the bus to Letitia Carson? And my question is kinda based on that line of Highway 99, and just like that shift on those main roads and stuff.
Because it's come up a couple of times. I had it written down. I have, but I'd need to grab it.
Okay.
Eighty to a hundred kids ride the bus daily, and then two-hundred-and-forty are assigned a, a registered stop.
Okay, um, do you know that on percentage-wise, or is that just in, cuz they-
Well, there's about three-hundred kids, so about a third.
A third ride every day? And then how, about how many are assigned?
Um, about seventy, well, two-hundred-and-forty, so.
Most of them?
Yeah, the three-hundred.
So the major, so that means they probably ride partially, cuz just as I have a partial bus, um, and drop-off person, so that's what the registered number is, right? And then the other ones, every, okay. Cool, thanks. That's really helpful, cuz, um, yeah. Sammy, did you wanna go next, since you said you had a-
Yeah. Ryan, you heard the recommendation, uh, from- Yeah. Ryan, you heard the recommendation from an organization, seven to twelve months to deliberate. You and I spoke about other districts who engage in that. I never heard of a school name or a full proposal being there and deliberated on for a full year, but I've heard of situations similar to ours, which is long-range facility planning, understanding capacity, understanding future deficits, and you engage in that process. It takes time. What's your professional assessment? And is there any other stories where, like Bethel or other school districts, they said, here's a plan, we're gonna put it for deliberation for twelve months?
I'm not familiar with that. I'm more familiar with a process where a decision may be made, and then there's time once the decision is made, to, you know, to, so as the example of Clear Lake and Bethel is the one you, we often talk about. They made a decision in the spring and then announced it, made the decision during a board meeting, and then they didn't close for the following school year. They closed the year after.
But the proposal for the board meeting was two meetings, and they voted on it?
It was, it was much quicker than the timeline for the actual closure.
Thank you.
We also know from that experience that that school, they didn't follow the same pattern that we have, where we've been trying to talk about which school, what that impact would look like. So that, that school was taken completely off guard by a board decision that happened in the late evening one night.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Chris.
Follow up on that timeline question. Are you familiar with the Broad Foundation? I think that's where the Oregon PTA.
Collected their info?
Right.
I'm not.
Okay. Because when I looked deeper into that recommendation, it said that that twelve to eighteen-month timeframe is really based from the first board meeting, when we've discussed any kind of relocation or consolidation, anything like that, to the actual day that a new school starts, the consolidation starts. So that twelve to eighteen months includes all of that time. And so, and I wonder, would you say that when we did the long-range report, that was the beginning of us looking at consolidation, which was last spring?
Honestly, it feels like the first time they met is sort of the beginning of that process, because they were starting to collect information through both folks looking at demographics or demographers, and then also some of the pieces around architects and capacity and quality of the buildings. So all those things started to be collected at that point in time.
And at that time, like last winter or so, being a principal of one of our smaller schools, there was lots of talk at that time of like, of fear, like there was already talk of consolidation around that time of like winter last year, as that was starting. So it was a conversation that maybe wasn't formal, but had started to happen with that process starting.
In connection to those statements, I also wanted to point out, we've heard from community saying the Long Range Facility Planning Committee didn't say to consolidate schools. It wasn't their role to do that. They had a specific responsibility. They had a charter of what it was they were supposed to be doing. So they were collecting the data, putting it together, and then it was presented to you as a board in August.
I think that's an important point, Chris, because I think that there's a misconception that that guidance, one, is a standard, when it's not. And two, because standards are things that are put in place and measured, and you have a responsibility to meet versus guidance, which is like, these are recommendations that probably will work well. And also the timeframe around that does not start from notification of which school it is. From when we had a conversation, it starts from when it first talks about to when it opens, not when a decision is made. And that's what you just reiterated right now, that I remember from our conversation. And I think that's important, because I feel like we're being, we have been, it has been shared with us that that is the timeframe for a decision, when that's not actually what it says, right? And so that's where I think it's important for the community to really look at that as far as the whole thing. And I was thinking about that even during the public comments about, like, when a school closes or you get notified about it, there's still all this time to process that. It's not like gonna happen tomorrow. It would be happening next fall, so there'd be this whole year for the staff and the students if we did close one or both schools that have been proposed. So I think that's, I appreciate you bringing that up right now, because I had it in my notes somewhere, and I, when we're listening right now, I wish I would have remembered that. But, yeah, so I just wanted to mention. Okay, I'll stop rambling, because that's what I'm doing now. Therese, go ahead.
I wanted to get some clarification on some of the numbers that we heard this evening. So we're familiar that on the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, we have a four million dollar shortfall right now. And then we've been hearing about this projected shortfall from 2027. And I was wondering if you could comment on two things. One is your understanding at this moment in time of what 2027 would look like if we, A, don't close a school or schools this twenty-six, twenty-seven, and B, if we do close schools for twenty-six, twenty-seven, what does that, how does that set us up for the scenario of twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
There are so many factors and variables in those numbers to go out that far. What I would, what I would say is that when Lauren ran those numbers last winter, that's where that eleven million point keeps coming from. It was based on not making any modifications in terms of consolidation.
So then that would mean that if we made a change in the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, that, that gap for twenty-seven, twenty-eight would obviously be smaller, because we would be dealing with a smaller working budget for what's needed to cover the expenses. Is that my understanding right?
Yeah.
It also kind of compounds, because it was also about, that, that projection was also about if we did nothing for this school year. And we did make reductions, as you're well aware, in the budget process last year.
So I think I want to say back what I think I'm hearing, which is that changes that we make in this school year are going to have a rolling effect on how large the gap will be. And that works if we make changes, and that also works if we don't make changes. That if we don't do anything, then the gap, as we're projecting it, could potentially be worse, but it won't be better. And if we do something, the gap will be smaller. How much exactly, of course, it's gonna be hard for us to say, but we are talking about decisions right now that would impact the scenario for us in twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Bernie, then Sammy.
Byron, for you. So the model that you presented in your testimony, are you, is that something you're gonna start next year? Is it contingent on, on us executing a plan?
Well, the proposal has K six as part of the model, so yes, it's contingent on that. The other piece is, it also needs a lot of feedback from community and staff and, and business partners. And so I have like an outline, a timeline, kind of sketch on how to get that feedback, but it's too early to engage in that feedback when we don't know our parameters are. And so that's kind of the piece for that. And so if I think about timing, when decisions are made, dictates how much time we have to thoroughly plan that. And so the innovation team is doing some early parameters on philosophy around some of those grade band models. But once that's in place, we have plans to engage all staff. We have student groups. We have other focus groups that already exist, affinity spaces as well. And then we've been in conversations with the foundation to bring in community members and business partners to also gather that feedback on that. And so, but we can't start that until we really know what parameters we're working from.
Just a quick follow-up on that. Is there a transitional model, like for the existing students in those bands? Or you just enter that all together?
Can you help me understand what you, what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah. What's gonna happen to all the students who are not entering K next year? But the current first graders and, to sixth graders, are they going to just go into this model? Or there's a slow gradual transition into it?
So the model of that is, I'm trying to think of how to answer that. So I think like that's part of what the planning would be, but also part of that, part of the model ideas aren't fleshed out. So I don't know what we would be looking at in necessarily transitioning. But I think that's the work of our staff to do once we have things in place to know what that would look like and what we'd need to do to transition students.
And K four looks similar to what it, what's happening right now. I think the work that they need to focus on is what, what happens in five, six?
Yeah, and in five, six, I think, based on that, it would look different for fifth graders, possibly. But I think in that difference, it'd actually be more rigorous, with more elective and more choice, and more pathways for fifth graders than they currently have in the opportunities of a self-contained homeroom right now. So I think there could be potential academic benefits for fifth graders as well as sixth graders.
We ruled, we ruled out two elementaries because of capacity, correct? We ruled out high, a high school because also capacity at this time, correct?
Yeah.
We're evaluating a proposal of one middle, one elementary. We received comments from the community and from you, analysis of which elementaries where it will not work, because the cost savings are not sufficient, or because capacity is not going to be addressed within the existing boundary, correct? Or you want to clarify?
Yeah, primarily capacity.
Primarily capacity. Leaning on the last answer of rigor, tell me where closing an elementary and middle now, oh, not now, effective next year, is going to actually give us better student results, or better rigor in programming, or what we heard from Erica, more opportunities. Is, is closing a middle and elementary better from that sense compared to just closing a middle?
The difference is the, the savings in the one model versus the other, and the ability to be more flexible in the funds that we do have to work to support some of those specialists.
So truly, those savings are the less deficits will be prioritizing programming and extracurricular or music, et cetera, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other, oh, go ahead, Chris, sorry. Then did you have one, too, Shawna? How about Chris and Shawna?
The contingency fund just keeps getting brought up over and over again. And we've heard from a community member that we have fifty million in a fund to, you know, more. And I'm, I know last, or not too long ago, we were told there's like four million in our contingency fund, and that Lauren emphasized again today that that fund will only fund a month's worth of
Payroll.
Cost payroll things. Is that, and then, so there is no other funds sitting aside that we can use for schools or anything else. Is that true?
You have, that emergency reserve is about five percent of the budget, so that's about five million dollars. So that's what you have in policy DA, and that's where you would also have the criteria for me to refill those dollars within a three-year period of time. So working on a budget around that, unless you modify the policy.
So that's separate than the four million that's?
No, we're talking about the same.
It's the same bucket.
But with that, so the month that Lauren was talking about, that's just payroll?
Well, it's all caught.
All costs. Okay, I was like, ah.
Thank you for the correction.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, because I was like, then there, that's not counting all the other pieces to it, is what I was thinking, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you. And I asked about it earlier in the context of like the longer term, because of like, if we use it right, like if we're saying like, we'll just scrap that. And we were just advised to be fiscally conservative at this time from the Oregon School Board Association during our recent fall meeting. Gives me a little bit of pause of allocating that funds in lieu of, or instead of doing what we unfortunately are having conversation about right now. So it gives me a lot of pause to use it for something else if we were just given that advice, like literally. I think it was, it was last week, so we could go to, so that's been the latest, that you all should have received an update with that information as well in your emails. So I just wanted to mention that, since we're talking about reserves, that's why I asked about it, was based on that recommendation and thinking about the cautions around funding declines that are coming, too. And it's not a scare factor thing, it's actually the reality we're facing right now. We have public testimony today about impacts to SNAP and to Oregon Health Plan, which also impacts a lot of things for us. So, yeah, Sammy, I see you raising your hand, that's why I keep looking over at you. Because you're like, I was like.
No, please carry, carry your point, because I just want to share my agreement to it, but I'm sorry if I made.
That's, that's fine. I was just wanting to further clarify where that question was coming from, since, since we were just chatting about reserves again. I think it's really important that we keep that in mind, too. And it's not saying I never want to use the reserves. I want to use the reserves for the, those emergency times, which I agree, like this feels like an emergency, too, that we've been preparing for. In knowing that we would have to have it refilled in case there's another emergency within a certain, we can adjust, it is a policy, we can adjust the time period. However, that could land us in some serious trouble. So, go ahead, Sammy, then Therese.
So Chair, I really want to share my agreement with you. While this is a discussion that has to be separate as a policy DA, but I think it's relevant here, that there's two types of emergencies. There is, and both are catastrophic, horrible, but there's one that is one-time emergency, like the furloughs that had to happen in other districts, but did not happen here, because of disruption of the funding mid-cycle. Or you're, you have a disaster where you need to fix a school and the insurance is not covering it. That's one-time emergency that you can recover from. There's another tough situation we're navigating, which is continuing declining enrollment. If a place like Phoenix Talent, they had a fire, they had people relocating, they needed to use their reserves, because they know that their community will come back. And if, assuming the state did not chip in, that's a time where I would say it's declining enrollment, but it's not something that we see ourselves recovering in three years. So I really would caution from that. I adjourn since 2017, last time reserves were used, twenty, 2008, correct, Ryan, or 2011?
I wasn't here for either one of those. I think it was '08.
So. '08? You are for like, '08. I never imagined I would say this, but if we did not have declining enrollments, if our enrollment is steady, we're not closing schools, I don't, I did not anticipate saying using the reserves might be in our future, near future, but now I think it is for the points that Lou you mentioned. Because of that, I really want us to separate them. If we need to close schools, we need to. If we don't, we need to take that cost. But the reserves will really pay huge dividends if we keep them for their uses. And let's remember, those millions of dollars gave us way more millions of dollars because of our rating. The bond gave us much more money because our rating, because those who are lending us, saying, you have reserves, and you kept them, we're gonna give you more value for your bond. So for that reason, I really want to share my agreement with you on this topic.
I do think there are two separate conversations that are kind of related, though, because like, looking at that as an option or not, and knowing that there is, there is, there is a decline ahead in this biennium. Did you have something, Therese?
Well, so I, I share similar concerns about that. I wanted to, there are like a million questions, right? We can't ask them all. But before I ask any question, I just would like to say that in the process of the conversation and, and in comments from folk. in the process of the conversation and, and in comments from folks, um, within the community, I understand, and I'm hearing very clearly that the, the way that something like a consolidation or a possible consolidation gets presented in the order of daily business of a district and a board does not feel the same to a community as a headline that says, thinking about closing a school soon. And so I, I get that those, like for us, this does not feel like a, a surprise conversation because we have been watching the budget. We have been participating in the conversations. We have been seeing the reports showing decline. This has come up in budget committee meetings. This has come up with, uh, long range. You're right that long-range facility didn't say you should close a school because that's not their place. But they did cite under utilization of our facilities, which is code for you have more real estate than you have people for the real estate. And so that was within their purview and they did do that. And that information is all publicly available. But it is not something that people get excited about if they don't think it's affecting them. There's a handful of people in our community that follow those reports and come to meetings and listen and email. And there's a lot of folks who did not know and, and do feel caught off guard. And that's not the same as no one was aware or talking about or thinking about it. And I feel like that's a really important distinction to make. And I would love, not right now, because we have this other thing in front of us, but I would really love to hear from folks who have been engaged and were maybe not caught by as much by surprise. How they've stayed engaged so that this didn't, wasn't as a surprise to them. And for folks who did feel caught off guard, what, what would catch your attention to get those nuggets along the way? So that, that, you know, the, the breadcrumbs are there and you're not re, reading eyeball deep in reports, but you are um, getting the, the highlights that feel pertinent in a way that feels digestible because I do think that gap is there. And I, I don't know what to do about it. And tonight we can't solve it, but I just want to name it. And I also want to name that our superintendent uh, has worked very hard to provide information to this board. And this board does not make that an easy thing because we ask for a lot of information. And earlier tonight I heard him say he wants direction from us. Does that mean that we want him to draft a different proposal? And I just want the community to hear that we're here right now and he's not giving up on figuring out something that is going to meet what we are responding to as the needs of the community and the fiscal responsibility that we need. I think that means that he is in, that you are in this and there are going to be hard decisions. I don't think there's anything easy about the ones you have put forward, even if they don't end up being the one we land on. But I don't think I can continue in the conversation without saying there is, there is no interest in not including people. There is no interest in, but there's also no interest in laying off $4 million worth of staff because we can't figure out how to make a decision on a timeline that is what's in front of us. So these are both true. It's not one or the other. They're both true. And we do have to do the hard work and we do need to figure it out. But we also need to recognize that the, the hard work didn't start right now. They've been laying a foundation for this for a very long time. And I do want to make sure that they get credit for that. I have questions, but I'm not going to ask them right now because I took several minutes to share my thought.
Thanks, Trace. Um, can I just add on to a really quick, and then it's Shauna's turn, I swear. Cause I was like, I was like, oh no, Shauna. Yes to everything that Trace just said. And I remember last spring, um, people were telling me like, oh, that's what you mean by consolidation. When I was in conversation with community and made it clear, like, we didn't know that's what that meant. And so we, at our board meetings, we very specifically were like consolidation is we're talking about, we're going to start talking about closing schools next year. And folk were not, didn't, may not have been watching our meetings at the time because it didn't affect those schools. And I remember even the, um, the long-range facilities planning committee, did I say it in the right order? I, I always mix it up. At that, um, session with the community, folk walking around and I was chatting with them and I heard people looking at the numbers and they're like, oh, our school's safe because it has X amount of numbers. They're like, we don't need to worry about our school. Oh, it's going to be that school. And that's what you're talking about Byron with Mountain View being like, oh my gosh, um, it's probably us. And so I, those conversations were happening last spring. And so I want to make sure folk remember that, that, um, it feels new once your school is named. And a lot, we did get some people that let us know they were very surprised at it being Letitia Carson because of the numbers of, of students in that school. And so I just want to make sure that folk know that we've had this, we've been having this conversation and I apologize that it feels like a sudden surprise for everybody. And everything, and we're not trying to be mean or try to pick on certain schools or certain areas of town and stuff like that. And I just feel really strongly that folk need to understand like, um, we want to engage in conversations with folk and to reach out to us about it instead of, um, instead of not. So yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Shauna.
And just to appreciate that, that acknowledgement too. I think that for, before I go to my other question for folks, you know, hearing consolidation. And I remember that too, Lou, in terms of folks saying we didn't know what that term was referring to or didn't know what that meant. And it's a big difference between hearing about consolidation or figuring out this is what's being talked about now and then having your own school named, especially when you don't expect it. And I know that there was panic that went through multiple schools over the last year for, for months. Um, even with reassurance that there was no decision at that time, that, that data were being looked at, that decisions were being made. And you know, the really, I know Ryan, you wanted to take a really thoughtful approach of talking to schools first before putting out data or before putting out information. And that's such a hard call in terms of how do you do that in a way that really honors the people who are going to be the most impacted first. And so that's, that's hard. That's hard. My question comes back to process. So in thinking about what we've been asked by the community pretty loudly and clearly around slowing down, around really looking at the process. One of the things that's, that's come up is external review or looking at a consultant or a third-party reviewer. Um, who does this kind of work? And I know that in thinking about, you know, as you were asking questions about the budget for, for next year and the year after, that it would be very irresponsible for us to not do anything at this point. The number of staff that would be laid off with no consolidation this year, and then the looming crisis that would hit the year after that seems like it will be here in the same position, but looking at an even bigger, more massive cut. And that's really problematic for all that students would lose this year too. And so my question, Ryan, earlier when you asked us for direction on next steps, what are we looking for next? Um, something I'd like to just bring to the rest of the board is even the question of just exploring a little bit, what, what do educational consultants in that space do? What would it cost to have somebody look at numbers and data? What would the timeline on that process be? What kind of data would they be looking at and would they be able to help bring out? And I think exploring what would that look like? And would it help fill a need that the community is asking for? For us to have some kind of review. You know, what does that timeline look like? And could it really help us look at the numbers? Even looking at what's been proposed here, whether or not that lines up. If we had external review that really backed that up, that would be helpful versus if we had external review that said, wait a minute, there are other things that need to be considered here. Sets us up not just for this year, but following years as well. And so just a, an ask to other board members if not necessarily jumping and taking that step, but exploring what would that look like? So we understand that as an option.
Judy, you haven't gone. So Judy, then Sammy.
I want to say I support that proposal and also too, like this team that I've like kind of whiplashed you. I was surprised when LC was named and clearly I disagree with it. But I also agree that it would be irresponsible not to do a consolidation this year and to be continuing to grow our deficit. And thinking about, um, staff, but we've had enough responses from community and perhaps even, they could help us with communicate, communication with the community because I was absolutely not surprised at all. To see consolidation on the table. It's now, it's, you know, two rounds of budget cuts. I was kind of surprised it took two years, um, to see that. But how can we make sure that we're providing quality information in a way that's accessible to this community? Because it is kind of disheartening to have, you know, 10 months where absolutely nobody comes to our meetings or we might have just a couple of people. And then two months where we have full rooms and people are very, very surprised about what we're talking about because that's the time that those decisions are being made.
Just want to put into the record that I think early 2024, Ryan, I asked, where is the dotted line on the graph where if we hit it, we need to start the conversation. It was more than a year, a year and a half ago, if I remember correctly. And I think I want to balance between two things. That's our intention. A thoughtful, deliberate, community-oriented analysis and decision-making and decisiveness. I'm going to quote my mentor and the person who told me, Sammy, you gotta run. And now he's retired from school board. Uh, we have a dual role. We're delegates and we're trustees. We're the voice of the community. And also we're trusted to make decisions on behalf of the community. They trust us to make unpopular decisions. And, and when they are both intentions, which intention, which one needs to really be there, maybe 51, 49% is being trustee. Uh, they trust us to make those decisions. So for that purpose, I would, don't want us to go into paralysis by analysis. Also, I don't want us not to do thoughtful analysis. So Shauna, respectfully, I will push gently back on the recommendation of a consultant. Because consultants were going to take their money if you tell them, take my money, unless we have specific scope. And I did ask it in my personal conversations, emails, phone calls and today, is there any additional information that you want to see? And I'll be very frank. There are some individuals who said, I don't trust the data that the district is sharing, period. And I get it. Trust in governments, local and national is weak. And, uh, people trusted us to examine that data. So if we believe there is data that needs to be examined, let's ask that. If we believe that there is additional questions that the district did not provide us, let's ask that. And I did ask for the table, the capacity table, and we got it and we examined it. So I would push gently and say, if we have a scope of questions need to be answered or things needed to be audited, let's go for it. Uh, we have a financial director who have prepared budgets has been audited year after year and we do our, our sites and, and our meetings. So, uh, I want to do the trust and verify, but with clear questions, what do we want to verify? So my recommendation, if we have any, anywhere between now and X time, we provide Ryan, here's the things that we would like to verify through external party. Uh, I, I would be open to it so far. To be very genuinely honest, I don't have clear questions that I couldn't pinpoint back to say it was answered somewhere not visible to the community member. I can't pinpoint to it if I can have a conversation with them. So what is it that's we're missing in terms of information that needs to be audited or verified?
That's a great question for the board, um, because we, I, it's kind of a tough one for me because we're in a budget crisis and we're being asked to spend more money. Consultants aren't cheap. And the last time we had somebody put the, I don't know how much it cost to put the, um, information together on which, which packet was it, Ryan? That, um, they did the, it was a feedback. Um, from, you don't have to, I just remembered what it was. It was a feedback. And then we were questioned about the integrity of that data. And so at some point it's going to be like, do you, how many levels of review are being asked by the community if we're asking experts? We have experts in like, that's why y'all are in your positions because you know what you're doing. And I understand that folk are asking for an additional review and I want to make sure we're really intentional about that. And I ask the community to trust that if we do do that, instead of, um, accuse it of being biased or not trusting that data because that was, um, that was, came back to us as well. And so I'm not saying I'm mad at the community for not trusting that data review either. I'm just saying that it puts us in a weird position because you, if we're asked to do something and then we do it and then people are like, but not by that person because we don't want you to use that person. Then I'm like, okay, now we're going to turn into this back and forth with the community. And I don't think that is helpful in, um, in building the trust piece around, like if, if, so I just wanted to point that out too. Like when we be intentional about what we're asking for and, um, if we do invest because it does, it is an investment of funds. And I'm sitting here being like, we're being instructed to like be fiscal, or we're being asked, recommended to be fiscally conservative on our funding right now during this time. I think, I think it's worth an expense like that if the community will listen to that as well. And if it's the same recommendation, that's going to be something that we're all going to have to kind of live with too, for lack of better words. But so is there anything that the board, um, feels that would be good to be analyzed? Or is it the whole thing? Is that what we're asking? And is it feasibly possible in a short amount of timeframe? Like do, do we have people that we can? I don't know how long, that would take a while, it seems like.
I would think that would take a considerable amount of time. When I'm, again, I'm, I'm coming forward to you with proposals based on your requests.
Right.
And so if that's the request you're being ma, that you're making, um, as your advisor, I would also encourage you to do what many of you have talked about, a combo of, some degree of consolidation and some degree of third-party evaluation or bringing people back together to do the boundary thing. When we did the boundary thing last time, we used flow analytics and the community criticized their work as well. And they were the, sort of the only ones that do that work. So, um, it will take some time to find someone, um, based on that criteria.
Okay. That's helpful. Go ahead, Sammy.
I want to suggest also, I'm going to go back into high level 30,000. We're going to hold Ryan accountable, no matter what plan we do on what. Our student outcomes going to get better the following year than this year. And he showed us, um, some elements of that. So if you want to ask questions about how student success will be better with proposal, uh, the revised proposal compared to the original proposal, I think this is better use of our governance role that will inform us deciding one way or the other. And frankly, what really got me intrigued is the early literacy, uh, early childhood is two birds with one stone. Keep a building in the community alive and, and, and thriving potentially. And I know I have lots of questions to ask, how are we going to implement it once we decide one way or the other? But the other one is, I know our kindergartners who are, who were born during COVID years, they need that support early on and it will help us with our bottom line, uh, reading at third grade level or even be potty trained when they go to kindergarten. And in 13 years, being able to graduate. I think those are the questions I want to ask about the plan. Uh, if there's any more questions, show me how, when we do your evaluation next year, you're going to show progress on student outcomes.
Tracey, look like you want to say something?
Thank you. I'm, my, my mind is a little bit, um, my thought is a little bit blurred by. So I agree that we, whatever plan we implement, we want to see that it has, that is, that it can bolster student outcomes, right? And student outcomes are it's a very complicated set of factors that go into. And so I just want to be cautious when we talk about what we are going to be expecting to see after a plan is offered, that somehow the plan itself is going to be able to carry those outcomes. That's not true. The plan cannot carry good outcomes if the parents in the district don't, can't communicate with each other or won't communicate with each other. And so there's a lot of moving parts in that, that would have to come from both sides to say, we're going to hang all of this on this plan and its ability to do that. And, and to the point about the, the early childhood, while I completely agree with that, we have zero control over the funding of that. And so I want to see them everywhere, all over the place. And we don't have any money for that. And that is not within our wheelhouse. And so that investment is coming from a place that right now does not look like they're willing to make a commitment to uh, guarantee any kind of investment that where we could say, yeah, if we, if we build this out, we're going to see good things in three to five years. Cause if we build this out, we could see no funding in six months. So I, I love that, I love it. And I love the energy behind it. And I think we also have to set a realistic expectation that we, we could not declare right now in this plan that this is what would make the most sense or even be viable option for use of a building with funding that we don't have any control over in a program that is, has, was furloughed for 60 days last year. So anyway, my. So anyway, my actual, but my question about the, what do we want to do about this, about data is, I feel, I feel really strongly that there is value in a deeper look at our boundaries for lots of reasons. I also feel really strongly that when we come back, whoever makes the plan with reboundry, we are going to have no fewer angry people in this room telling us why that's bad and why it doesn't work and why this boundary, this street shouldn't be in this school and this one shouldn't be in this school. Because we've done this many times on things and we have never had people come back and say, oh, we unilaterally are willing to say that, this makes sense. When we talked about reboundering last time, we had a half an hour of public testimony about people's property values if their assigned school got changed. No discussion about whether or not that was going to streamline efforts in our district or make our resources more efficient or improve specials. People wanted to talk to us about their property value and the resale value of their home. And that is discouraging to me to think about that that's how you want us to make decisions. Most of you don't want us to make decisions that way, but some people in our community are loud about wanting us to make decisions that way. And that is not how you get strong schools across every single district. And we talk about wanting all of our schools to thrive, but if we need to reboundary and your house is the one that falls in a new address, I think we need to really honestly ask ourselves, are you really going to be okay with that? Some of you are honestly going to be okay with it. Some of you in the community are not going to be okay with anything we do unless what we do is exactly what you already thought we should do. And we cannot, we cannot let this process fall to the percentage of people in our community that there's no possibility of making happy. This isn't about making people happy. This is about figuring out how to keep our teachers. And we got $4 million worth of staff that we need to figure out how we're going to hold on to them in some way. So I just want to put that out there. Reboundering would be amazing. I think it would open up options for us. I do not have the confidence that when that boundary comes out, our community is going to rally behind it and see it as an investment in our school if they don't like where they land. So that worries me. And also, I still think we need to do it. I think it's really important because we're not going to fix the balance by reboundering one school. We need to do them all. And also, reboundering may not inherently point to which school we should close. It will point to where, through whatever metrics we decide are important in reboundering, which schools line up with that. But that doesn't mean that it's going to, it's not going to rise to the top of the list a really obvious choice. If there was an obvious choice, I think we already would have seen it. There's not an obvious choice. There are trade-offs and we seem to be struggling about which trade-offs we think are the most important ones to make. And I don't know which ones are the right ones, but I know which ones we are facing. And I don't know that there is a single right one, to be honest. There's not a single right decision. There is just which thing, which consequence are we comfortable, the most comfortable and feel the most equipped to help our students and lead our students through? Because none of them are consequence-free. So do we get more data? Okay, what are we going to do with that data? What do we want it to tell us that we don't think we can already know? I haven't heard anything that, so far, I haven't heard missing data that I feel like would make a really obvious answer to what we ought to do. And we're going to spend a lot of money to get data that's still not going to point to a really clear neon sign that says, do this. We're still going to have to interpret it and make sense of it. And it's going to be time, it's going to take time and it's going to take money. And our district staffers saying, we want the time to prepare our staff. And the community is saying, please don't spend money on things. Please, please use the money to support our students. I don't know how we justify $500,000 in analysis of data that won't give us a clear answer. Okay, that's it. I'm getting tired and I can tell I'm getting tired because I feel also like I'm getting punchy. So I'm going to stop talking, maybe for the night, but definitely right now.
I don't have a question. I just want to make comment. And I always-
This is board deliberation time. We decided that's, that was part of the process. Yes, we need to deliberate.
First of all, I don't think it's been said, and I know that many of us feel a true appreciation to all the hard work that the parents have done from Latisha Carson in their presentation of gathering information, their very impressive website, Facebook pages, all that they're doing. And I encourage, and I'm going to try to be, try to word this correct and it's late, but I encourage, I, I appreciate the, the comments and I know we all do. We, we want to hear from you. I also encourage you to go to the source of where this is all coming from. And that's that we're not getting enough money from our state department to fund our schools. And to please take the amazing energy and articulate conversations and communication to the state department, ODE, and to really voice the concerns about where we need more money to educate our kids. I also want to make a statement that in my 37 years of being an educator, I, for 37 years, did crisis work. I was the crisis response coordinator, meaning that in the event of a death, we went, sometimes went to the home of the child that, to that family and worked with that family and worked with the school and worked with students. And it was really hard work. And yet my team and myself showed up every day, again and again, doing that hard work. And I just, I want to make sure that people know that this team here is probably one of the most dedicated board, board of directors ever. If you really look around the state, you will see such work that is not dedicated to their school. It's more about advancing themselves or, or another agenda where this team works really hard. And I, I'm okay saying that because it is that these people are up at midnight responding to emails and they have full-time positions on top of it. And so we're here, we're back every day, we're continuing to read and to respond. And I just really want to acknowledge that because you don't see that everywhere in the state or in the nation. And we're here because we want to do what's best for kids and, and, and it's just really tough to be in this position. And yet we are coming back and trying to figure out what's best for how we're going to make this decision, figuring out what we need. So I just, I want to say that to my team here because I know that you all tomorrow morning have to get up at 6 o'clock and get to work and, and we're here at 11 o'clock and I do appreciate that, so.
Okay, we're going to have to start dwindling down and figuring out what we're asking Ryan to do. Did you have something that's leaning towards that way? I have one comment about what consolidation means as well after you're done with this one.
Yes. I just want to say thank you, Chris, for acknowledging the community and the neighbors. I've had to change schools. I've been in private and public schools. I've seen their triumphs and pitfalls. You can see community organizing like this in a private school. This is why public schools are resilient because community members, parents, neighbors show up. And I want to say thank you sincerely to every community member, adult who yielded for the kids. That means so much. And I promise you, text me or email me, I'll show up to your door if you want and I'll have the conversation with you. I'll show up anywhere you want and I'll listen to you as long as you want. And I mean it because what you did, giving up space for the kids to share is just so important and reminder of why we're doing this. And I am really optimistic in this really difficult conversation toward what's next step. I will share that with the capacity summary table. If I have it in front of me and there is a decision we need to make in November, I feel comfortable making a decision. And I want the community to share a question mark I have. Is there any piece of information that you did not have? Please reach out to us as a board or to me individually. I'll pass it on to the, to the chair. And I want to pursue that piece of information, either that I say, let's pause, I was wrong when I said at 11 o'clock, two minutes before 11 o'clock, that's I feel comfortable with only the capacity summary and the financial analysis. If I have these two right now, I think I can make a decision. If there's any piece of information that you don't have, let's have a conversation. I heard a lot. I pursued it. I'm happy to share the feedback with the community member, but I want to be also informed about any piece of information that's missing. So with these two things, financial analysis, capacity summary table, I feel informed enough to make a decision on the revised, revised summary, sorry, revised proposal.
Thanks, Sammy. I wanted to go back to, first, thank you, Chris, for your comments about the community and the board, about what consolidation is. And we've been talking about it a lot and I think it's important to remember that sometimes that does mean a school is closing. Oftentimes it does. And it's consolidating resources to make the school stronger. It's not just about like filling up buildings with new people. It's about strengthening the programs. And I think the presentation showed some key things that have been brought up over and over again by the community to us, such as the blended classrooms, such as losing time with spreading the staff then on art, music and library. Those kind of things that have come up over and over again from the community as things that they feel are missing or that are being damaged over the years as, as well as the rigor conversation. I appreciated what you showed, Byron, with the banding. I almost said Band-Aid, but banding and how that can lead to potentially increase if that's the direction that the community and district goes. So I just want us to think about that and remember that it's not just about money, it's about how that money will be applied to make the school stronger. And that's why we're having a conversation about consolidation because we do not have the funds anymore to be able to help Corvallis be as good as we want it to be and continue to increase our numbers with our test scores for students that are showing up. Again, we're ahead of the state in all areas. However, I do think we have a ways to go. And so as well, even though we are, and we are moving forward in those numbers, hopefully. So I just really want us to remember that and for the community to understand like that at the bottom line, that's what it's about. It's not just the bottom line financially, it's about helping strengthen the programs. And we hear from staff too about like how they wish they had more EAs, how they wish they had more support, how they wish they had more time to teach the subjects they love. And they don't right now. And I don't like that for our staff because it impacts the outcomes for the students and the families. And that's why we're having this conversation. I would say that it is not necessarily, I, I think it is a hard conversation, however it is a necessary conversation and we need to really stay focused on that part of it. I know any school that would have landed, I'm sure would have been filled the room. Any one of the schools, that community would be showing up, just like Latisha Carson's school community showed up tonight and has been. And no matter which elementary school it was. So I just wanted to share that before we start signing off and as a reminder, you have something, Bernie?
Yeah, just a quick statement. Our work isn't done by just choosing a course of action. Our, you know, we have board goals in equity and, and also healthy communities and we have a lot of work to, to build those afterwards. We heard a lot of people say about equity being, you know, there's a Title I school and poverty and so on. That population is feeling that they are powerless, just, you know? So we have to find a way to explain what we're doing to them, spend time with them and build up that community again.
You brought up the other thing I forgot to say earlier too. Sorry for going on and on, but that this is one of four Title I schools in our district and the percentages are not far off from each other. They're pretty close, they're within a few percentages. So it may be the highest percentage wise, but that doesn't mean that the others, Title I schools, aren't also in a lot of need. And that doesn't mean that there's not students facing poverty and homelessness in all of our schools because that exists, including some of the schools that have been thrown out there as privileged. And so I just wanted to remind folk that it's one of four of the, and a lot of people that, I don't even know how many people knew what Title I was before this conversation either, so I'm glad you all know what that means now, if you didn't know before. So before we, do you have something, Ryan? Do we, we didn't give you direction, right?
No.
Okay. So we can go home soon. Go ahead, Chris.
I've been punchy for two hours, so thank you for saying that, Teresa. What I want, what I'd like to see either from a consultant or from our own experts is really what we've talked about before, this issue with communication and communicating with the public. And making sure that information, we're trying to get year-round summaries out. I'm also sick, I'm sorry. So like Too Long Didn't Watch, you know, kind of thing for people who aren't watching four and a half hour long board meetings. So that's what I'd like to see specifically because I appreciate all the information. And then I don't know if we need more from the district, but I think that we need to continue this conversation at a time when we've all slept.
Well, that was, I don't, we would need to know the feasibility of that because, yeah, for another conversation. Yeah.
Sorry, we talked about this coming Monday, but it, does it have to be that day? I mean, is, I know you can't do any other day next week, but what about the Monday, the Monday of the-
So have two board meetings the following week?
Yeah. I mean, that seems like a, maybe a possibility or that we give our, we schedule a board meeting for the Monday after the 13th and we, if we can't get one in before the 13th, we convert our time on the 13th to continuing the discussion with the understanding that if we can't reach a place at that point, we have another meeting that's scheduled. And that would be only a couple of days off the schedule, which might be worth that. So I'm throwing out a couple of ideas about how we could possibly create that time and not worry about violating public meeting law. It's almost midnight now and so we, we're cutting it close anyway. Is that, is that feasible? I mean, I know, nobody wants to do two meetings in a week, but yeah.
I would just remind us, Veterans Day is the day after the following Monday. So I'm not sure if we're, sorry.
It's the, the Veterans Day is the 11th. The following Monday would be the 10th. For me, that's great because I don't have to get up at 6 o'clock in the morning on Veterans Day, but that's just me, so.
I have a, Kim, does the rest of the board feel comfortable with board leadership continuing a conversation about possibilities and communicating out with the board if it's feasible versus us spinning a wheel right now? Because I don't think that's a productive use of our time when we actually, absolutely, Kim can't do anything because she's helping us manage this meeting right now to look into things and we can't check with the rest of y'all's schedules to see if it even aligns. And so is that okay with you all?
It's a great idea.
Okay, so we're, board leadership, we'll communicate with Ryan tomorrow and Kim, so.
So, so to clarify, I brought forward a proposal, initial proposal, and then you asked for a revised proposal, so I brought that forward. At this point, I'm not working on a third proposal. I'm waiting for an upcoming meeting where you deliberate and then make it some sort of decision on where we go. And it's not going to be for action at that meeting.
Is that what we're seeing? Does that sound like a recap?
I, I think that's a recap and I'm wondering about, I, it's too late to keep asking questions and I have two things that I feel like you already have the information for, but either didn't get summarized in a way that my brain is holding on to them. Or you could summarize them that way. And I'm happy to just email them to you.
Okay.
But in anticipation of that conversation, I feel like those questions would be helpful to me in answering the final question of if there's any stone unturned that might be worth a minute, not weeks, but a minute, to say, is there something here? And so I'll send them to you and then if you can share them out. I do think that these are things we have the information for. This is not a new deep dive. This is a, probably a, Teresa, this was written in these three places and they didn't line up in a perfect row for you and you couldn't do the math yourself kind of moments.
Okay.
Okay.
So it sounds like we're asking Ryan to just meet with again, us again, to talk more and there's nothing, are we asking Ryan to do anything? And Sammy's chart that he, it's not Sammy's chart, the chart Sammy requested, which was helpful, um, to see that laid out. Was there any, and I know you had requested the, somebody to do a review. However, how are, what are your thoughts still on that?
My thoughts are, I still think it's worth just exploring, what does it look like? Not necessarily engaging somebody to do that review, but understand if we come back and say, well, it's going to cost $50,000 and take a, a two-year process, that tells us something versus here's a group that does it. This is the kind of data that we look at. Oh, we already have that data or we have not looked at that data. And that's really important for us to know. Um, so.
Any other requests?
I think more on the exploration side rather than that side.
That makes sense.
And then can I add one more?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm just looking around to see who else has their hands up.
Okay. I was just going to say, I, I suspect that tomorrow we'll wake up after having slept and taking in so much information. There was a lot of new information that came out in your presentation tonight as well as new requests from the community. And just wanting some space to be able to, to think about that and think if we do have other requests, what would be the process? Should we email them to you?
If we have other requests from Ryan?
Of questions that come up or requests for information?
I think that if you have specific questions, just to email him, um, to have those answered. I don't know that we can necessarily request more if we're asking for a short turnaround or even a double meeting week, um, following being out of town, um, for conferences too. So I wanted to remind folk of that. So, um, Teresa, you had your hand up too?
Oh, uh, I don't anymore.
Anybody else? Any last things that you're requesting from Ryan? Sammy?
Just Ryan, uh, did you share somewhere the marginal diff, cost difference? Basically adjusted with the most recent data comparing the, uh, cost of the initial proposal using October's enrollment data and then the cost savings with the revised proposal. I would like to see maybe a comparison there. Um, that's not there on the capacity, in terms of dollars, basically. Yeah. It's not there in the capacity summary.
Sammy, are you talking about the per school?
So the, not per school, uh, the initial proposal, we had a dollar value.
Okay, okay.
Assuming older, uh, enrollment. Now we have new enrollments and the revised model with dollar value using that new enrollment.
I got you.
I'd like to see a, a compare, a marginal comparison, apples to apples, using the most recent enrollments for the initial proposal and revised proposal.
Thank you for clarifying. And I, that does bring up something that we heard this evening was wanting to see a breakdown of schools by, you know, school by school to compare. I think that, that's, um, not as useful, probably not going to be as useful of a, of a tool as people think it will be because we have different funds that flow in from title one. We have different rates of special education needs in one school versus another. And so to, to ask this team to take that information, compile it and then wash it of all the things that are irrelevant in terms of differences because they can't be compared. I think what we are down to is there are core staff in a building that we know we will save. That is what we know we will save. And if the expense is related to a child, it will follow the child to the new school. So I don't, I understand the, the impulse to say, well, let's look and see which one costs more. The variations in the needs from school to school, I don't think make that a very useful comparison.
And it's going to be very difficult to pull because that's not how we hold it.
Just a, a, a quick thing. You brought up, uh, the state economic forecast, middle of November.
I think it's the 19th.
Yeah. Say it's really bad. Is this going to change any of your proposals?
Based on how you direct me to move forward, it could potentially. I mean, I'm, again, the, I'm bringing back the proposals per your request. So if we get to November, the middle of November and the state forecast, revenue forecast looks, um, worrisome, then I think we should have that conversation. At the same time, we are running, um, up against a deadline to start to make the transitions we need to make if any sort of consolidation is going to happen.
Yes, thank you. Um, the forecast is probably not good. And so just once again, um, all signs point to, um, thank you, Ryan, Melissa, Byron, for sitting in front of us, listening to us talk basically forever, for the last hour. And, um, before we go again, um, for the community, if you would like to engage with the board, I recommend reaching out to us. We're always happy to meet with community members, either individually or in small groups of no more than three. And so if our schedules align, um, and to answer questions and that sometimes that's a better way to engage with us than, um, if you want a conversation. If you just want to provide public comment, that's obviously, we want to hear those too. But if you're seeking a conversation, reach out to us, please. Um, and thank you for your patience with email responses. And, um, with that, our meeting is adjourned at 11:13 PM.